Five, four, three, two, one, go ahead.
I would like to call to the August 3rd, 2020 Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners work session. Welcome everyone. It's good to have such a large group on the virtual call for our meeting this afternoon. I will mention that Commissioner Poole had a conflict, so she was going to be running just a little bit late, so she will be joining us shortly. First item of business is the approval of the work session agenda. You all have a copy of that before you. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the work session agenda, including the changes on page three.
No further questions, Chairman?
We have a motion by Commissioner Chu, seconded by Commissioner Honeycutt. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. And we move now to discussion items. First up is item 3.1, North County Association of County Commissioners Legislative Goals. I think this is something that everyone is familiar with. Each year, we submit a list of goals to our state association. Those goals are then vetted by steering committees, which several of us serve on different ones of those. Those are refined down, and then we'll go to our legislative goals conference, which precedes the regular session of the General Assembly, where all those goals from the 100 counties throughout the state are discussed and refined down. So I think this item is on our agenda just to receive input. That we have a little time. Those are due on September 30th. So we would need to have those in place to act on during our September meeting. I don't know if staff had prepared anything or any comments on that. Mike, did you have anything to add?
No, we just wanted to give you, alert you that the date is coming up. You've got in front of you what we've had for the last two years. So if you can review, if some of those are gone by or no more relevant, please, please let us know. We will strike them. And if there's anything else that you would like us to add to the list, we can add it and then, and you can discuss as a board at either the upcoming work session in September. So they'll be ready to do, to be approved for the September meeting.
Great. Thank you, Mike. I suspect that, as he mentioned, attached to the agenda are the goals for 2018 and 19, or the last time that we did that.
Correct.
So I suspect that a lot of those will carry forward. But if you would take a look at those and come up with any suggestions of items that we might need to add, and we can have that discussion at our work session in September. And those are really important. That's what guides our association and the folks that they have in Raleigh that meet on a regular basis with our legislators. And so it's really, really valuable for us to have those submitted. We move now to item 3.2. This is from the Board of Elections with an update on early voting sites for the November election. And Carol Soules is joining us. Carol, are you doing the call?
I am.
Welcome.
Thank you. And I've sent you all the emergency order that we received that was executed by the Executive Director, requiring one early voting site per 20,000 voters for us, and they do not round down. We currently have 142,000 registered voters, so that would be eight sites. We can apply for a waiver, and my board is meeting Wednesday at 12:30. And I believe, I believe the request for a waiver will be unanimous. We have visited sites in the county. Well, first off, I think our office, to deal with social distancing, is going to be too small to hold early voting. So I believe, hopefully, we're going to the old Northern Tool Building on 29, which is about 25,000 square feet. So we can have plenty of social distancing, and that will hold a lot of voters. So that would be the site instead of our office. We'll still hold Kannapolis Train Depot, even though that's fairly small, but that'll give us a site in the Kannapolis area. The site we've had in Harrisburg, the church could not, could not hold early voting this time. So we've been to the Speedway. They have offered a site, which is in their infield. It's the Paddock Club, which is only around 2,500 square feet. But still, hopefully, that will be a good site there. And then the arena, since because of COVID, there's been so many cancellations, so we can hold a site there. Looking at the map with density of voters, I think that's going to cover the county well. So I think we have a good opportunity to get that waiver. Thinking of eight sites, if the reason they're requiring this is to help with social distancing, but if we go with eight sites, the sites are going to be so small that it seems to defeat the purpose. So I think we have a good option or a good possibility of getting that waiver. Now, I don't know if the board is going to ask to go to Concord Fire Station number nine, or if they're going to ask for a waiver to just have the four sites I've already mentioned. Concord Fire Station number nine, we voted at before. Parking is a problem there, and it is not a big room, so I'm just going to leave that up to the board. So that's what we've got so far. We'll know more Wednesday when our board meets. And then if the state, if our waiver is unanimous, the Executive Director gets to decide if we get the waiver. If it's not unanimous, then the State Board has to decide.
You're talking about four sites as opposed to eight, is that correct?
Correct. Four or five, if they decide to go with Concord Fire Station or not go there.
Right. So let's say if you did go with the five sites, how comfortable do you feel with your ability to secure enough workers to man all of those locations?
That's the question. And they did say in the waiver not to use budget or staffing as a reason.
Right.
So it's going to take about 30 people a day to staff a one-stop site. What we were thinking is that last week is when it always gets busier. So if we had people that maybe couldn't work the entire time, the arena and Northern Tool, the two larger sites, if that last week from Wednesday to the last Saturday, we upped it to maybe 45 people, if we've got them. So we're, we're working hard to staff, and slips are coming out with the tax bills to ask about being a precinct official. So we're hoping that's going to give us more people.
Carol, how many days of early voting will there be that you have to have any volunteers in a row?
Well, that also is up to the board because they still haven't voted on the plan, which is going to decide the weekend days. In that emergency order, she did require 10 hours of voting on the week, two weekends. Now, that can be Saturday and Sunday, Saturday or Sunday, and it can be more than 10. So depending on, there's 17 days total of early voting. I don't know if we'll have a break in there, you know, if we have a Sunday off, if we have a Saturday off, but there are 17 total days.
Is that 17 mandatory days or just total time?
It's just total time. We do not have to be open on Saturdays or Sundays. We, we do have to be open, I believe it's eight in the morning until 7:30 at night. We start on October the 15th, and the last day is October the 31st. So the Saturdays and Sundays are where we do have some discretion, but it's up to our board, and we do have to have at least 10 hours of voting on those weekends.
So Carol, I would assume you've got some sort of contingency plan on four other locations if the waiver is not accepted?
No, we don't, to tell you the truth.
So it's that tight and that difficult, is what I'm hearing you say.
It is. It is. We've visited some other sites, but when you think with social distancing, that's the one thing, and then with so many people voting early, although I'll also say, I mean, our absences are way up. In 2016, total, we only sent out 5,500 the entire time of our absentee period. We've already gotten about 3,000 requests, and we don't even start sending out ballots until September 4th.
Carol, this is Lynn. Have you looked at some of the sites that would have normal voting on, like, you know, the high school lobby areas and places like that? Are they not big enough, or with school being out, you know, or everything being done remotely, it would seem to me like that we could use some of those spots as well?
And we may be able to, and that may be what we do if they say we have to have eight sites. Typically, and this is just me personally, I don't like to vote early voting at the same place as a precinct because people get confused. They come to, because early voting, anyone can vote there. Then we did it at the Harrisburg Library and also had a precinct there. People would show up on Election Day and say, well, I've always voted here, but that wasn't the precinct. So I really like to have different places early voting than Election Day. But that would be a good, a good idea to have that at the schools if we do have to have eight sites.
One of the four sites, you said, is Speedway and overall Highway 29, and then the arena.
And Kannapolis Train Depot, the place we've always voted in Kannapolis. And I think that spreads it out over the county as well.
Carol, I know that in times past, during presidential election years, you, at different busy periods, have had quite a line at the depot in Kannapolis, if I remember correctly. And are you going to have to, is that going to be like a 50% capacity of what you've been able to do in the past? Or have you figured that out as time, if you can let in the building at a time?
What we can also do is, what we're planning to do, maybe not at the big sites, but the smaller sites, is hold people at the door. So there may be a line, but then once they come inside, there'll be a certain number of voters we can have inside. But then we'll put tape on the cement outside. And we do have that area in the lobby where we can snake them. Of course, we won't be able to snake them very much, but they could go down that sidewalk at the Kannapolis Train Depot. And I do think this time, we're going to have a lot more curbside voting. People just don't feel comfortable coming inside.
Right. So can anybody that wants to pull up and take advantage of the curbside voting, you don't have to demonstrate inability to get out or anything of that nature?
They do have to sign an affidavit that says they can't come inside. But in the past, because what you get a lot of times is the driver, who probably could come inside, wants to vote in the car as well. And we train our precinct officials. You do not question. Because, I mean, especially this time with COVID, it may be that they could come inside, but they don't feel comfortable. They have to sign that, but we don't question if they sign it.
Well, and not to, not to take the pessimistic view, but the crunch that there's going to be for volunteers, if one of them happens to test positive during early voting, are they all going to have to go home and quarantine? I mean, I guess we, maybe that's asking a question. We don't know the answer to it, but it's almost as if you're going to have to have a.
Right, a backup site.
Yeah, for, for, in case there's some sort of positive test that shows up somewhere, and all of a sudden, we've got a quarantine.
And it may be, it probably is going to be a bigger deal with the workers than anything. With having those sites, I don't know if I'll have a backup site for early voting because we've got those three other sites. I have thought about that for Election Day. I thought maybe about the arena being kind of a central location if a precinct has to close down Election Day, you know, because someone tests positive. But for early voting, it may be they could just go to the other sites.
I was thinking more of the actual poll workers.
Right.
Who's scheduled to be there for, what did you say, 13 days, whatever the proposal was. Let's just say on day four, somebody tests positive, well, they're out for the whole rest of the time, and that may end up impacting all of the other poll workers at that particular site. But anyway, I just.
Well, we always have a reserve list as well.
Okay, good, good.
Okay, additional questions for Carol?
And y'all know where I am if you think of anything else.
Well, it sounds like you've got your hands full, and we appreciate what you do. And certainly, your board has some important decisions to make as well. So good luck, and we hope that works out well. And I think meanwhile, we can all keep our eyes and ears open for additional potential seats should they be needed as well.
And we recruit anyone that you know because we can use all the people we can get.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we move now to item 3.3. This is a childcare facility partnership opportunity. And we are happy to have Deputy County Manager Rodney Harris to talk about that item.
Good afternoon. As you said, I'm pleased to present this evening about a partnership opportunity for an early childhood education center here in our community. As you know, you've established the Early Childhood Education Task Force as an acknowledgement of the importance of early childhood education here in Cabarrus County. In addition to serving on that task force, I want to acknowledge the contributions of Jackie Whitfield from All Saints and Ben Field from the Partnership for Children, and Waynette Taylor from RCCC, as they have done most of the legwork for this proposal. They are also, I believe, joining us today in case you have any questions for them at the conclusion of my presentation.
Could I interrupt you for just a minute, Rodney?
Yes, sir.
I, I am noticing that on my Teams screen, your slide is not displaying. I don't know if it is for everyone else or not. I can see up on the television screen it is, but it's not showing up on our Teams meeting. Other commissioners, are y'all getting it on your screens?
No, mine's because the content can't be displayed.
I have it on mine, but I have also something that I don't never see is on the left-hand side, it says Slide 1 of 15, Take Control. So I don't know if Todd can hear me, but that's what I'm seeing.
I'm the lucky one. I have it displayed exactly like it typically does, so whatever.
Okay, I see it now.
I do, I do.
Yeah, I got it.
It now looks like what Lynn had where it's out, the slides are out to the left.
Yeah, I see it.
Okay.
So do you see one with current state of childcare?
Yes, sir.
All right, so we're back in business. I think we all understand the importance of childcare for working parents, but I think this quote is apt to the situation that we face both nationally and here in Cabarrus County, that one of the single greatest barriers to economic mobility facing American families today is access to affordable, high-quality childcare. So the creation of the Early Childhood Education Task Force was an acknowledgement that we have room to improve. Some of the numbers and the shortfalls can be seen in terms of the numbers that are reflected on this slide. In Cabarrus County, we have 87 licensed childcare facilities, of which 66 serve children between the ages of zero and five. Although there are 9,871 children in Cabarrus County that have working parents, only a little less than half, 3,852, are being served in those licensed facilities. One driver of this difference between the enrollment and the potential enrollment is the accessibility of childcare. We have many parts of our community where available childcare slots, particularly for infants, are incredibly low. And unfortunately, because of COVID-19, we anticipate that this problem will grow. At the same time, affordability remains a primary reason many working parents cannot enroll their children in a licensed facility. The Department of Health and Human Services recommends that 7% or less of household income go towards childcare. Needless to say, we fall short of this nationally and here in the state of North Carolina. For example, in North Carolina, a single parent with an infant would spend about 38% of their income to send their child to a licensed facility. A married couple with an infant would spend about 11% of their income, both above the recommended percentage. And finally, the quality of childcare is another challenge, which is impacted greatly by hiring and retaining quality staff. Unfortunately, in North Carolina, the average childcare teacher makes only $11.32 per hour, or $23,546 annually. Only 49% of staff receive insurance, and few receive retirement benefits. And only 38% of childcare teachers have a degree in early childhood education. That brings me to the reason that we're here discussing this with you today, is that we were approached several months ago about a potential opportunity to address these needs in the community. While we can eliminate these challenges in one fell swoop, we can work together to try and move the needle. To that end, we have spent the last few months collaborating on a proposal to address accessibility, affordability, and quality. In addition to our participation, we would partner with All Saints and a facility operator, which we hope would be Roanoke Barres Community College. All Saints is in the process of bringing their education weight up to court. They have offered to lease their facility to an operator for up to 68 children. They also have many committed volunteers that are willing to participate in center activities such as story talks. The operator of the center would be responsible for all facets of operation. And again, we hope this will be Roanoke Barres Community College. The facility would operate Monday through Friday from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. In addition to seeking five-star licensure from the state, the center would seek accreditation from the National Association for the Education of Young Children. Lastly, the operator would provide educational opportunities for students in the RCCC Early Childhood Education Program to grow that next generation of early childhood education leaders. Obviously, the most important aspect for you all is what our role. And that would be primarily financial, although we would share in the governance for the proposed facility. There are two areas for county contribution potentially. One is the initial startup costs, and the second is whether or not we start a tuition assistance program to assist with the affordability. As part of this partnership proposal, children of county employees would have access to at least half, 34, of the proposed slots. So this table summarizes the current estimated startup cost that totaled to just under $250,000. This includes staffing expenses for a short duration, needed equipment, and supplies. There is cautious optimism that if the board agrees to move forward, that some of these expenses can be offset by grants that All Saints is seeking. A bigger decision point would be around tuition assistance and whether we want to address the affordability for whole county employees and also the larger community. One option is to provide tuition assistance for only the county slots. Again, that would be 34 based on the type of enrollment. There are two potential types of enrollment. There's private pay and then subsidy. Private pay are those that do not qualify for childcare subsidies and pay the full cost of care. The maximum annual tuition per child for these parents based on the estimated tuition would be $15,300. If the county paid for 25% of that tuition, that would drop the family's cost to $11,475. If we paid 50%, that would drop it to $7,650, obviously making it much more affordable. Keep in mind, this is a very simple approach to how the cost would be given up. If we decided to move forward with this arrangement, we may want to consider things like an income threshold for how much subsidy would be provided. The second type of enrollment would be a subsidy-eligible enrollment. By law, these enrollies have to pay 10% of their income, but they also end up paying an overage fee as well. The overage fee is the difference between the tuition charged by the center and the rate paid by the state of North Carolina. In this scenario, the difference would be $244 per slot, and that would be for an infant, which could be paid by the county rather than passing that on to the family. Subsidy enrollees would be much more economical since the state is subsidizing a significant portion of their care. Obviously, we don't know what the mix would be of private pay versus subsidy, but the maximum cost for 34 slots at a 50-50 cost share would be about $260,100 each year.
Rodney, can I get clarification on the private pay and the subsidy-eligible? What you're saying, what I see here, is it's $15,300 per year per child. Is that correct?
That is correct, if they were paying the full cost of tuition at the proposed center.
Well, it would be the same whether they, they paid it or there was a subsidy. The cost would be the same. In other words, it would be a lot less if they got some subsidy, that type thing. Or if, you know, the county would pick up 25 or 50%, the family would obviously pay that much less.
Correct.
Okay. Now, what, can you tell us, I mean, maybe I've missed it. I've looked over this. On the, on this particular program, is this going to be like a, like the More at Four program? Or is it something that we, well, that's what we used to call it, the More at Four, or the Kids Head Start? Is it something similar to that?
This would be more in the line of a traditional childcare center. And so it would be from birth to age five, and it would be more in line, like I said, with a traditional childcare center.
It's like a daycare center, basically. Okay.
Correct, yeah.
All right, thank you.
So the, the second option would be a little more costly, which would be to provide the tuition assistance to all of the slots in the proposed facility. With this option, the maximum cost would be $520,200 annually. Either tuition assistant program approach, whether half or all of the slots, would be seen as a signal to the business community from one of the largest employers in the county about the importance of addressing childcare affordability. If we decide to move forward, there's also likely opportunity to engage other employers about their participation at the facility. And so I want to spend a couple of minutes talking about what would differentiate this center from what we currently have available in the county. And so the first part is the facility staff. And as designed, the facility would operate with a minimum hourly rate of $15 per hour, which is 50, about $4 more per hour than any other center in Cabarrus County. Health insurance and retirement benefits would also be provided, and all of the lead teachers would be required to have an AA degree or higher. These factors combined would differentiate the center from any other in the county. And more importantly, the pay and benefits would likely keep turnover low, which has been shown to be critical for a child's development. In addition to staffing, the other differentiator would be that the center would seek NAEC accreditation. So this is a national association that has a set of 10 standards, from staff competencies to the curriculum in the facility. And we currently have no centers in Cabarrus County that are accredited through that organization. And then in addition to that, we would also expect the facility to seek a five-star childcare license from the state of North Carolina. And so in terms of the next steps, the most pressing question is whether or not to move forward with that partnership. And that's important from a number of factors. One is the sending a signal that the county is behind this will help in terms of accessing grant funds. grant funding. The other is also in lining up that operator for the facility. And so, once the board is providing that support, we would be able to have those further discussions with the community college about their participation. If we do proceed, we would also need the board's guidance on what level of commitment in terms of those initial startup costs, and then also whether or not we want to provide a tuition assistance program for the facility. And then lastly, there would be the matter of how to cover this expense on a go-forward basis. The easiest recommendation for this is, we ended fiscal year 20 with about $675,000 in what is the board's contingency and also charter school contingency funds. It would be recommended, if we wanted to proceed, to include that on the reappropriation list that you will approve hopefully in two weeks, to place that in the FY21 budget in contingency, so that we could come back to the board with a further solid plan about how to spend those resources in September or October. And then the ongoing expenses associated with this could be built into the FY22 budget. And so that concludes my remarks. And again, we have Ann, Jackie, and Waynette that are hopefully on the line that can answer any questions, and I'd be happy to take any questions that you have.
Rodney, the slide where you showed the 38% of childcare workers do not have a degree in early childhood education, then the proposed, maybe it's not a fix, but the part where we're walking through, upping the pay and whatnot. So then, the requirement there would be to have an associate's degree. So, looking back, is 38%, I'm trying to piece the two together, because an associate's degree is just a two-year program, but I'm not sure, can you get a two-year degree in early childhood education? So, is that even making a dent in the 38%? I'm not sure I'm asking that correctly where you're following me, but do you see where I'm going?
Yeah, the 38% is folks that have a background in early childhood education, either at a community college or graduate, undergraduate level. And so, the goal with this particular facility would be that every lead teacher in that facility, and it's important to distinguish that, we're just talking about the lead teachers, would have an associate's degree from somewhere like Rowan Cabarrus Community College or higher as part of working at the facility.
So 62% of the current teachers in these facilities do not have at least the minimum of an associate's degree?
They do not have an early childhood education background. That is correct.
Yeah, that's interesting, and not in a good way.
One more question, Rodney. This is Lynn again. On this proposal here, how, other than the age gap, I think you said this was from zero to five? And I'm thinking about the Mary Frances Wall Center, you know, what are we doing down there? I mean, I think that's pretty much self-funding, I believe, because those parents paid the tuition for that. Is that not correct?
I am not as familiar with that, because I know that's run through the school system, but my understanding of it is that they offer it at a significantly lower rate than a typical traditional facility would charge.
Right. Well, does that have a subsidy? I mean, I don't think that we're subsidizing that. I don't know if Mike understands that question or not, but Mike, I don't think we subsidize tuition for the Mary Frances Wall Center, do we? We just maintain the building, more or less. That's all part of the school budget.
I think you're on mute, Mike.
I'm not quite sure if it's an actual line item in our budget for the schools, or if they're covering it through. I think the ones, I'm not sure if all of the spots are subsidized out there, or just the ones for the teachers and their children. I'm not quite sure. So we'd have to give you a little bit more information on that.
My recollection is it's just for the teachers, the employee.
That's what I think it is, yeah.
Well, you know, I don't know really how to react at this point. I think we just need more information, you know, about, you know, all of this. We got a good presentation, Rodney, but, you know, how to have a reoccurring expense like that, and taking in consideration all of the other things that we're working on now, courthouse, the school, and all of those things, and no doubt, many more to come. But, you know, I think, you know, I wouldn't be ready to proceed myself at this point.
Rodney, when you mentioned by doing this, something about bringing other companies in the area or encouraging their participation, what were you thinking along those lines when you said that?
Yeah, so I think the goal there would be that if we had a tuition assistance program for county slots, that we could potentially, rather than opening it up just to the community as a whole, we may be able to engage some of our local businesses and leaders to see if their companies would partner in the same way. So if we decided to share the cost of tuition 75-25, that Anatrium Healthcare or somebody else might be able to do the same thing for a number of slots at the facility.
Yeah, I've had a brief conversation with both the city of Concord and the city of Kannapolis, nothing moving forward. I'm not sure if they've even approached their boards, but just some brief conversations that we were looking at this and just to try to get their interest.
So how would this? I'm sorry, go ahead, Diane.
I was just going to say, so I get the startup cost, and then are you proposing an ongoing cost year after year on the subsidies and the whatever might be decided, or is that just to get it going and then would it go away from it, or is it an ongoing?
It would be, it would be an ongoing expense if tuition assistance was provided. Now, obviously, there's always the option to not provide tuition assistance and to have the facility, but if we did provide it, it would help address the affordability concerns that have been expressed through the Early Childhood Education Task Force.
And how would the, how does that $15,000 a year compare with other childcare opportunities in the area?
It is in line and probably slightly below a typical five-star licensed facility, and they built the model for it to be basically break even in terms of how they set aside both the revenue side and the expense. So it's right in line with the market here in Cabarrus County.
All right, thank you.
So Rodney, if, so the 60, is it 68 slots?
Correct.
30, 34, I guess, are county slots. Is that first come, first served? If we, I mean, the first slide, basically, we would be financing or funding an additional employee benefit. I mean, that's basically the way to look at it, right? If it's just for county employees, so how do they, is that first come, first served? And then if we subsidize, open it up, the other slots, how does the general public then, I mean, we may be getting too far ahead and not get into that detail, but, I mean, I can see that being somewhat difficult to try to figure out who, how do we allot those slots to the general public?
Yeah, and I could tell you, we haven't focused a ton of energy on that front, just because we wanted to get this before you all, to see if there was some general support for moving forward, and then we would get into those details. But I think, in my mind, it was always seen as more of a first come, first serve basis in terms of making sure it's sort of accessible and equitable. It'd be very hard to find some criteria to select who can go and who can't.
Right. Well, I mean, I know this is a huge need. I've sat in on, I know one, maybe two of the task force meetings early on. You know, I guess my biggest fear would be, you know, I look at who's involved, and there's no doubt in my mind it will be successful. So sometimes that's a good problem to have, but in this particular case, my fear would be the ongoing, that 520 all of a sudden dries up pretty quick because of demand, and then we've, you know, I guess that's for future, if we decide to move forward, that'd be for a future board to figure out how to do it. But I know the people that are involved will do it well, and the demand will go up, and it just, it gets awfully expensive, but I guess we just have to weigh that versus what, you know, what we're providing and what we get out of it, and maybe if anybody else wants to comment on that, or the long-term vision of what this may turn out to be, that'd be
Just a couple comments on it. I think the presentation is excellent that the group has put together. There are a lot of different ways that you can look at this issue. This is certainly something that this group has been working great deal on in our community needs assessment process that's been conducted over the past year. This is an issue that has been discussed extensively about the lack of affordable daycare in the community. Certainly, you know, we hear a lot of discussion, I think your opening quote was extremely appropriate, and we hear a lot of comparisons with other communities about people's opportunity for upward mobility. And in so many instances, I think that is handicapped by the lack of quality, affordable daycare for folks. Some of the conversations that we've had when talking about daycare is that it's extremely difficult for the people that operate these centers to be profitable. That's kind of something that I've questioned before. You know, if they're not, if they're charging what appears to be a pretty substantial amount of money for those services, the workers are not extremely well-paid, then where's the missing link on that, that it cannot be profitable for these operators? And I'm sure there's a very logical answer to that out there. I think that this is a great opportunity for Cabarrus County to step up the quality of the opportunities in the county. If Rowan Cabarrus Community College, I know that Waynette, that has been involved in putting this together, is responsible for that area at the community college in providing those courses to train quality employees for these daycare centers, which is something that we sorely need. And I think if we set the example of a little better rate of pay and some of the benefits as well, that I think we may be able to step up the quality throughout the county. You know, we look at this, and I also look at it in a couple of different ways. You know, it is a substantial amount of money that we're investing, but if you look at other employee assistance programs, now, I'm looking at Cabarrus County not as a government entity right at this moment, but look at it as an employer. And employers spend a substantial amount of money on benefits, on insurance, on a lot of other areas to attract quality employees to their businesses, and that is no different for Cabarrus County as well. So that is, would be a substantial employee benefit for our employees. Also, if you look at the indirect costs, and certainly, some of the other folks joining us on the call are better qualified to talk about this than me, but the importance of education for children from birth to age five is emphasized over and over again, that that's where those basic building blocks are established, that are determinants for how successful they will be for the rest of their lives. When we look at an opportunity to provide high-quality, early childhood education for these kids, then we're also looking at savings for Cabarrus County and for other governments down the road. You know, we are getting them off on the right foot there, and certainly, Ann and Jackie and some of the others can quote some of these statistics, but they have some very clear statistics about, you know, what that means if that early childhood, quality, early childhood education, and how that affects the likelihood that they will be incarcerated at some point down the road, which of course comes at a very high cost to government and to society. And then you look at their increased earning potential. I mean, there's so many, so many facts that I've heard that are kind of eye-opening about the impact of that birth-to-age-five education. And so I think that with this group of volunteers that has stepped up to help put this plan together, and certainly with All Saints stepping up to assist with the facility needs, I believe that this is something that, you know, I understand that all the details are not worked out, all the answers to, you know, and all those things, but I think it is certainly, from my perspective, something that we should pursue and begin to answer some of these questions, and it will make Cabarrus County, if we can set a standard that will encourage other people to get involved, and certainly like Rodney talked about, private business, then that is going to make Cabarrus County a more attractive place for businesses to locate, you know, when that's something that we can show to our potential employers as an example, that they may do the same thing. So I see so many pluses, and I'm just very appreciative of this group that has put in this much time and effort into creating a plan, and I would certainly welcome any, Ann, Jackie, Waynette, I think I saw Nancy Hunter was on the call as well from All Saints. If any of you would like to speak up and offer some comments, you're welcome to do But you have to unmute yourself first. And I'm not seeing any of them on the screen right now, but that certainly would be my sentiments, that we proceed to the next step on this, and whether that needs to be another presentation that we would vote on later on, but you may offer some input, Rodney, as to how you envision, if the board so chooses, how we would go forward.
Well, I agree with that, and I'm glad to support that. I noticed, Rodney, you said several times, if Rowan Cabarrus so chose to do so, where are y'all at with figuring that out?
The conversations that Waynette has had with leadership, including Dr. Spalding, indicate that they are likely to be the partner. They just were not yet ready to commit to that without additional details being worked out.
Well, I think going ahead and figuring out those steps and coming back and pursuing this is worthwhile, for sure.
Yeah, I think that's kind of where I am, is at least push forward and try to put together some detail in a plan, and I see Commissioner Poole is now on my screen, and I know she was setting up the task force, so I would imagine she's got some comments that I would certainly be interested to hear.
Well, I mean, this is definitely an area that's of great concern in the county, and I think it would be a great benefit for our employees if we chose to go forward with this. I think it would be a good idea to set the money aside at this point in time. I think it would be a good idea to set the money aside at this point in time, talk to, of course, the Rowan Cabarrus, and try to get all those details nailed down, and exactly what that's going to look like. You could easily do an assessment of our employees to see who would be interested, not signing up for it, but do we have employees that would fill those slots? And I, without a doubt, I think that we would probably do very well on that. But yeah, I think we should move forward and work out the rest of the details, put the money aside so that it's available once we're in a position to, to be able to help get this started.
Great, thank you. Are there, there are other comments? As we proceed? Okay, and I think, I think I've, I've seen in our chat room a, a comment coming back saying that the, the library is happy to supply, apply some additional information as well, giving us some of those statistics and what the impact of that quality, early childhood education is. So are there any other, any other questions? Rodney, have we given you the direction that, that, that you need to proceed forward?
You have, based on the guidance we've received tonight, I will add that to the reappropriation list. We'll talk about that item in a few minutes, so that we can at least have the money set aside if the board decides to move forward. And then we'll continue the dialogue with our CCC and All Saints to see if we can get a finalized agreement before you.
Excellent. And, and of course, with the full understanding that we're still working out some details, and, and there will be decisions to be, to be made as, as we go forward.
Correct, yep.
Okay, anything else on that before we go to our next item? Thank you very much. And we move now to item 3.4. This is COVID-19 pandemic funding. We are happy to have Ellie Landrum with us to talk about that.
I, I'll go ahead and start it off, introduce it, and then Ellie's going to take over and go through the statistics. Again, as you know, we have been receiving money from the, from the state and the federal government through the CARES money, and then also with FEMA for some of our requests. We wanted to give you an idea, or, and, and, and our, and the public, the idea, or, or the information of what we have received, what we have, what we have spent so far, on which programs and, and how good they're working, as well as what we've moved to, to the cities for their ability to spend and use them from some of their programs as well. But then also, there'll be some other funding available, or there is other funding available that's unallocated or unassigned. So we're, we're looking at some, we have some suggestions for you for, through some of our programs at Human Services, and we'll have Ms. Laura Light will be here, she's here, and we'll be able to speak to some of those issues, especially the, the rising number of evictions due to the loss of employment here. So that's where some of, we can move some of the money. But we'll, we'll go ahead and start with, with Ellie. And she and Kasia put together a, with a, a slideshow presentation to, to show what we've done in the last several months, but then also what we're looking to do. And then Rodney and I can add to that conversation as well. So Ellie, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Can everyone see the PowerPoint on my screen?
Yes.
I apologize, but I am going to throw a bunch of numbers at you tonight, but this is a high-level overview. Our needs and our funding guidance from the state and from the federal government evolves very quickly, almost on a weekly basis. So what you see tonight is accurate as of tonight, it might change next week. But we are working with three major pots of funding under the CARES Act. So we have FEMA, category B, which is part of coronavirus relief funding. Then we have our CARES Act coronavirus relief funds, and then we have our secondary CARES Act funding. And the secondary CARES Act funding are funds that are distributed under the CARES Act to various county departments, and they have varying purposes and rules. It is a separate pot of money from our CRF funding. So with that, I'm going to go into our FEMA category B. Our emergency management department has been working with the FEMA reimbursements. They submitted the first reimbursement request last month, and it has gone through 50 levels of review. At the 49th level of review, most of our expenditures were denied. So we were only able to receive just over 13,000 in reimbursement. The remaining amount, which was almost 100,000, was placed under our CRF fund. So what FEMA did end up reimbursing us for were thermometers, mostly masks for parks, EMS, some of our signage and masks and PPE for infrastructure and asset management, and then some cleaning for the sheriff's office, as well as some other PPE. That reimbursement was provided at 75% by the federal government and 25% by the state. A lot of FEMA reimbursements require some percentage of coverage by the county, but with coronavirus, the state and the feds have taken over at 100%.
Ellie, just for the public and the boards, PPE is a personal protective equipment.
Which can include masks, sneeze guards, goggles, protective suits, anything that prevents, that protects your person from the virus.
Ellie, did I understand you correctly? You said there were 50 levels of review? Is that what you said?
Yes, sir. It's arduous.
Were rejected on most of the requests on the 49th level?
Yes, sir.
Wow, okay. Do want to make sure I heard that right?
Yes, sir.
Did you give some explanation of what those, what that 100,000 that was rejected covered?
Certainly. So emergency management has been working with CHA on congregate and non-congregate shelters. A lot of the costs associated with those shelters, while originally told to us by FEMA were eligible, they ended up rejecting some of those costs. So a lot of the meals provided to individuals in those shelters, a lot of the supplies and the PPE equipment associated with those shelters were denied. All of our sneeze guards, actually, for, in the various county buildings, all of those were denied by FEMA. And the sanitization of county buildings was also denied by FEMA.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. I will say the state has gone to bat for us. They are appealing the decision. So I'm not sure where they are on that. We've already gone ahead and filed those expenses under the CRF fund, but I know the state is working to try to reverse the decision, at least for the future. So that was FEMA. Our CRF funding source has evolved. But we, we originally awarded 3.7 million back in May. We created, well, the state created a plan for us, and then we filled out the plan based on five major categories. Those five categories include economic support, compliance facilitation, outside allocations to municipalities and nonprofits, public health, and payroll. So based on those five categories, we determined that the following funds would be distributed. The public health consists mostly of PPE, sanitization, that kind of thing. The payroll included medical professional salaries and benefits with CHA, as well as salary and benefits for some of our county employees. The economic support includes grants and support for small businesses. And the compliance facilitation essentially equates to any sort of work from home or technology components. And so we purchased 130 laptops for $182,000 with CRF funding. Initially, we allocated funding to municipalities, even though we were not mandated to do so. And so that is where that $712,000 number comes from. But round two funding was just awarded to the county last month, and the state changed their, they changed their guidance. And so 25% of the total funds awarded to the county is mandated to go to municipalities within the county. So 199,216, there's a typo there, I apologize, but 100, just under 200,000 was awarded to our municipalities. And so under Plan Two, you'll see that, that 25% is allocated to that major category. And then an additional 300,000 was added to our compliance facilitation for additional laptops for work-from-home employees. We end up having just over 2.5 million dollars that are unallocated at the moment. We've not submitted our second plan to the state since getting the second round of funding. So part of this presentation is presenting some ideas to the board and to the public to see what we could use this 2.6 million for.
On the 75,000 economic support, what are some of the uses of that, where you have small business?
We have not actually, Mike, you want to take that?
Yeah, I can take that. Yeah. Again, as Ellie said, we had to have a plan in place, and it's a fluid plan. We can modify the plans as well. But we wanted to make sure that we were looking not only internally at county operations, but we were also looking for opportunities to support our nonprofits and, and our, our local businesses as well. There are some restrictions on how we can do that, and we're trying to get around some of those now. And most of those restrictions would be towards the small businesses and the nonprofits. We're very limited as to what we can do. So that's why, especially, a lot of, what, a lot of the requests we were getting was for lost revenues over the last several months, and lost revenues is strictly prohibited for us to reimburse for. So we're, we're looking for other options for grants. We're not looking for loans. We're, we're looking to do grants or, or either purchase personal protective equipment for them and for the nonprofits. And we'll talk a little bit later. We've done quite a bit of that already for the nonprofits, and hope to do more of that. But we will keep you posted on that and give you some opportunity to review the regulations of that CRF funding for what we can do for small businesses. And we're trying to do that. Once we can figure out what actually we can do, other than purchase the, the personal protective equipment, we will provide you with some options so that you can, so that you can direct us in, in how to proceed with that. And that 75,000 is a budget holder. It's not limited to that. It wouldn't be required to spend that much, or you could spend even more. It's just that, as, as Ellie said, there's still 2.6 million dollars unallocated that we need to, to find a home for and spend before the end of the year.
And on the municipalities, on the 2 million and the other, are they submitting to recover certain expenses, or are you just allocating, allocating it regardless? How's that working?
This go around, that 25% of the total funding that came to the county is mandated to go to them. It is up to them how they spend it. We are not, we are not telling them how they can spend it. It was divided up based on, we, it was not, it was not mandated on how we were to divide it up, but we thought the fair way to do it, it was a similar to our sales tax equation. And that's how we split it up. So, but they, they do have to, they do have to justify what they spend it on.
I must really blame my question as how it was split up, so thank you.
Okay.
Mike, another question. On the, the funds that, that we're reserving to, for economic support for small business, would, would a reasonable example for that be? I know that Ellie mentioned that, that FEMA denied reimbursement for the sneeze guards that we had to install throughout county facilities. But that same thing will apply to a lot of businesses as well. So some of the folks that are really struggling, that have had a significant loss of income, and over the past five months, when, when they have an opportunity to reopen, let, let, that, that, that might be an example, that they have to install these sneeze guards. Is that the type of thing that we're saying we potentially might be able to help with?
Yeah, it is. Again, we'd have to go back and look at the specific language, but I think it is. But then also, as, as all of the executive orders have said, the mask, a requirement of mask for staff and for visitors, we can, we can help supply them with that, those, those safety equipment as well.
Right, great. Thank you.
Mike, I have a question for you there in reference to the municipality portion of the CRF funds. You said they had to give an account for how they use the money. Do they give an account to us or to the state for that?
Well, the first review would be through us. I mean, they've got the same regulations that we have on what we can and can't spend it for. So all we're going to do is, is, we're going to, we're going to look at it to make sure we, we agree that that's a legitimate purchase, and, and, but then ultimately, the state's going to review it as well. Originally, we were going to be held liable for, for anything that was spent, whether it was the county or the cities. We would be held liable for it if it was not in compliance, and that's not the case this time. But we still need to review it before it goes to the state.
That's good. That, that was what my concern was. Thank you, Mike.
So some of our expenditures to date, which have been reported to the state in our July report, are just over 1 million. So 20,000 of that includes masks that went to the community, as well as employees and staff. 100,000 of that included what was granted by FEMA in the first reimbursement request to FEMA. The 107,000 are costs that the municipals gave to us in their first report. Concord, Midland, and Locust submitted expenses for the month of July. Those are included in the first report to the state. Laptops, 192,000, which I mentioned earlier. 264,000 are salary and benefits for our county personnel that were reassigned. So our school resource officers, with schools being closed, they were reassigned to parks, as were our library staff. And then, excuse me, our EOC staff, while the EOC was active, their salary and benefits are included in this number as well. We also originally allocated 1.2 million to the Health Alliance for personnel. That number will probably increase before December, but for now, they have been given 370,000 for, for salaries and benefits.
To go with that, as, as Ellie said, the 20,000 for mask and, and some of the others, just to give you an idea of the groups that we've been working with, well, I think that may be on your slides, so I'll leave, I'll, I'll leave it there. I didn't want to take.
You have it on your slides.
Yeah, okay.
So some of our planned future expenses, these are some things that we've already identified. Additional masks for another $20,000. There are some virtual training equipment for the detention center, some TV screens, cameras, laptops that would be used for in-house training, rather than bringing people in, into the jails. Then we have, we actually do have three more projects that were going to be submitted to FEMA, but based on the first round, we expect another 100,000 to not be approved by FEMA. So I'm going to just, I went ahead and added it to planned future expenses under CRF. We have an additional 300,000 for laptops, but I think that we are negotiating that price. Hopefully, we can get it a little lower than that. And then 810,000 remain from the 1.2 million originally allocated to CHA, but that number might increase as well.
Sorry, sorry, I didn't mean, the, the laptops, again, the, the original purchase, plus the reshuffling of, of, of already previously assigned laptops were for us to immediately respond, send our employees home, and be able to work from home. Now that some of the departments, such as the library, is back in operating at a, at a modified process, and some of the others, those laptops had to be sent back to their original user, so we're having to purchase some more. Just for the board knows, but the public, we were working with about 40 to 45% of our employees are still working from home. And in order for them to do that and be productive, they had to have their computers. And most, a lot of those had either desktop computers or didn't have computers. So when we moved them home, we, we had to provide them with the equipment so that they could do the work that they needed. So when we moved them home, we we had to provide them with the equipment so that they could uh, do the work that they needed to do.
Yes. So we do have quite a few potential future expenses that have been identified by um, departments and other nonprofits. So like I said in previous slides, we have two point six million that are unallocated right now, and so we have a couple of ideas. Um, so the open door house, they have requested seventeen thousand. Um, it's to complete renovations that have been delayed due to COVID for their youth shelter. Um, as a result of COVID, they've had to turn away several youth um, to to Mecklenburg County for replacement. So they requested seventeen thousand for renovations. Uh, B F A Church Food Market has requested sixty-five thousand and that is to bolster their drive-through view distribution. Um, they need additional non-perishable food, volunteers, a ramp for volunteers to load and dis- disperse food and a part-time person to assist with distribution through December.
Yeah, all of those programs there would run through our Human Services Department. Uh, we also have some other issues. Um, and Ms. Laura Lipes on here. Uh, Laura, can you talk a little bit about what you're seeing on the evictions and 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 the the loss of, because of loss of ability to pay the rents?
Sure. Hey there, I'm Laura Lipe and um, just a little bit about the crisis programs. We do have um, several different programs that we administer here at Human Services um, depending on income and eligibility. So, just to kind of give you an idea, um, with power utility companies and rent assistance, a lot of that was put on hold due to COVID. We're now starting to see some of those um, clients that um, are surfacing needing help paying rent that are maybe facing eviction. Um, we have helped several families that were in the hotel during COVID and we're facing eviction from those hotels. So we have seen some of um, our clients eviction. We are starting to see more clients needing help with utility assistance. Some of our um, utility companies are starting to disconnect as of eight one. Uh, notices have been sent out and they're basically asking clients to start seeking out assistance because they're starting to accrue large balances of um, past due of not being able to pay on any of their bills since COVID started. So some of what we're seeing is lack or loss of employment. Um, some who have been furloughed, some who are um, waiting unemployment, still pending unemployment or just never were um, eligible for it. So, just to kind of give you an idea, um, invoices that I've signed just today were sixty-two hundred dollars. And just in one day from our um, C I P funding, um, which is our federal funding. And all of that is basically utility bills that we are paying on behalf of clients. Um, some of those bills, um, we can help a a client for six hundred dollars um, one-time assistance for the whole entire year. And what we're starting to see are some of those balances exceed that six hundred dollar amount and we're only able to help them with six hundred dollars um, per year. And so what they're having to do is come up with the difference. And they're having to make payment arrangements with the vendors that are willing to work with these um, clients to meet the, what is past due. So a lot of what we're doing is partnering with um, Crisis Ministries, Salvation Army, some of the other resources that we have in the community and sometimes that's not enough. Um, we're still seeing that the client may have to come up with a hundred dollars, two hundred dollars to to still meet that past due balance. Just to kind of give you an idea of where we've been, um, since things are starting to ramp back up with um, utility bills and power companies and being able to formally evict um, our clients.
Thanks, thanks, thank you, Laura.
You're welcome.
Any, any, any of our commissioners have any questions of Laura and any of the programs she's working with? Okay, great. Ellie?
Uh, so another potential need is an employee-dependent day camp. Um, this was just brought up last week. We haven't fully talked through all the details, but it was a need that um, was identified and so it is an option in the future. Um, just providing a space for employee dependents um, on Cabarrus County grounds while their parents are working.
Yeah, especially since the schools are opening virtually and we're, as we start to gear back up, the employees gotta come back and and like many other parents, um, they're gonna, they're gonna have to make some decisions on on where to go. We can use some of this money here to set up a day camp uh, so that our employees can come to work, leave their kids at the day camp and and then pick them up at the end of the day. And this would be something temporary. This isn't a full-time, but it was just to get us through this next uh, phase until we, until the the schools are able to and feel comfortable about opening back up. Uh, and then then the the kids will be back in school and the daycares will be able to go back. But the this short-term time as we start bringing our employees back in, uh, while while schools are still having to operate virtually.
Yes. All right, so now I'm gonna shift gears and talk about our third pot of CARES Act funding. Um, we're, we're getting probably one award every other week and I wouldn't be surprised if I got an email tomorrow about a new award, which is great. So right now, we've been awarded one point one million in additional CARES Act funding and they're all belonging to different departments for different reasons. So Planning and Development just received five thousand for staff P P E to perform home improvement work for elderly homeowners. Um, our Alps department received twenty-seven thousand for P P E and reopening expenses whenever they're able to.
Ellie, we lost you. Ellie? Looks like she's frozen up.
We've been very fortunate in not having this happen too much.
Yeah.
But she's frozen on my screen as well.
Yeah, so that hopefully, uh, our folks can get her back in while while they're trying to get her unfroze. That they're, they, these are grants that was, that are either our department heads uh, saw and and applied for outside of the CARES, of the CRF funding that we were awarded. Uh, and they took the initiative to go out there and do that as it's, okay, this is gonna be Ellie's, uh, it's it's Ellie's home computer that's freezing up, so it's not our system. So, now I just lost the chart, but uh, um, can you guys put that that slideshow back up?
Mike, this is Kasia. I'll put it up in just a second.
Okay.
And Mike, I was just gonna comment, um, while we were waiting, the, a couple of the big ones on there because most of them are for specific purposes. Uh, I sent you an email about the seventy-five thousand dollar award uh, to our library and that is to purchase hotspots for Kannapolis City School students. Uh, so they'll be able to access the internet from home if they do not have connectivity. Uh, so we think and and are really excited about that opportunity to partner with Kannapolis City Schools to provide that access to students, especially while we're in a virtual learning environment. Um, the other one from that list that's a little bit unique is the EMS uh, award. So that was a hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars roughly and they're actually waiting for a round two award. And what makes that pot of money a little bit different is that they were actually able to use that for revenue replacement. Uh, so whereas we can't use our money for revenue replacement, uh, they were able to use that to offset the loss in ambulance fees uh, due to the reduction in those trips. Um, so that one's a little bit unique in terms of being able to use it for that revenue replacement. Um, the Board of Elections item is primarily P P E and sanitation uh, to hopefully have safe elections for folks that come in person. Uh, and then on the transportation side, those were primarily personnel uh, for transportation costs during this pandemic. And then the second round is dealing with primarily fuel costs and maintenance for those vehicles. Um, so these awards run the gamut in terms of what their purpose is. Uh, but again, these are outside of that seven point nine million we got through the C I F.
Uh, Rodney or Mike, do you know what the asterisk is for the 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 Board of Elections category?
That is uh, because that award may grow. Um, so so that is the current amount, but there is some hope that that we will actually end up being a larger amount.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Okay, um, yeah, as I said before, we are reaching out, uh, and touching uh, a lot of these agencies, nonprofits already. Uh, we we are working, as we spoke earlier, we work with the Health Alliance. Uh, we we, we supplied uh, personal protective uh, mask and gloves to multiple agencies, Partnership for Children, Boys and Girls Club, El Puente, Hu- the Humane Society, uh, Cooperative Christian Ministry, Meals on Wheels and the Convention and Visitors Bureau. Uh, and today, we actually made a another delivery or the first delivery uh, to the Culture and Life Center for for personal protective uh, mask and and gloves. So, and then also, uh, staffs, uh, Kasia helped to organize four mask giveaways at at our parks as well as El Puente, uh, she and I worked with them. But uh, and we gave away uh, close to twenty thousand masks in those uh, in those uh, drop-eyes. It was at all of our parks, Franklin's Park, uh, Vietnam Veterans Park, Camp Spencer and Wallace Park. Uh, the, we had uh, all our our employees actually volunteered uh, to work those locations over four or five hour periods on each of those Saturdays. And then our Human Services staff, uh, along with Kasia's assistants, held two, one, one-day uh, mask giveaways at the Human Service Center and both of those days were very successful as well. So we've reached out, um, not only with the funding, but then also our staff is helping to make these uh, distribution centers work as well, so.
Uh, to follow up on what Mike said, um, these are some pictures from our different distribution events um, from our parks, Human Services. Um, we wanted to make sure the population was not only receiving the face mask, but this is one of the few opportunities we had to connect with folks since the pandemic began. So everyone who came by and got a mask also got information on the census, which is very important because as you know, uh, the CARES funding and other funding related to the pandemic is tied to census figures. So if we can go ahead and make another push, should something like this pandemic happen in the future, we can ensure we have an accurate count. Um, we also included information on library programming and voter information. So folks would have a complete package of things that are happening in the county right now. And I want to make sure that we recognize all the staff from Alps, from the libraries, from Human Services, uh, of course, our emergency services folks, um, our uh, emergency management team. They worked very hard to get all those packets stuffed and to volunteer, spend time either away from their family or as you can see, we had family members joining us for those distribution events. So it was a total team effort across the board involving most every department. Uh, the next slide we have. Um, this is the P P E numbers we have from uh, emergency management and I'm getting a Microsoft message that PowerPoint is crashing, so it must just be what's happening.
It must be cursed, Kasia. I'm back.
Okay.
Yeah, welcome back, Ellie.
I'm so sorry.
Are you able to get your PowerPoint?
I can.
Here, I got it.
Okay.
Am I still sharing my screen? There we go. Okay, um, so P P E, we've received, um, this is from our emergency management team and I believe Jason's here can speak to this if you have any questions. But it ranged from masks to um, sanitizer, gowns, gloves and face shields. Next, we have, Mike mentioned the groups from the community who received assistance through our programming. Um, and they'll see the full list of um, organizations there. They range uh, in mission and in audience scope, so we think we've got a broad spectrum of the community. Next, uh, we also supported our municipalities and many of the fire districts in the area and of course, our two school districts. And then, of course, the distribution events that Mike spoke of, El Puente Hispana. We helped with a distribution event in downtown Concord, our parks, Human Services Center, and there are a few more events we have planned in the coming weeks. Um, but all of this would not be possible without the help of our partners. We did not stand alone in this effort and we either received help or donations um, through our various partners, including Atrium Health, uh, Medic, Senator Hudson's Office, Lowe's Home Improvement, NASCAR and North Carolina Emergency Management. So, uh, to end, unless anybody has any questions, I just want to make sure everyone knows where you can go for information on our outreach efforts and information on how we're using our CARES and FEMA funding um, throughout the county. Go to cabarruscounty.us, which is our website, or visit us on Facebook, Instagram, YouTube, Twitter, um, all the various outlets at Cabarrus County. So I will uh, turn it over to whomever else has input.
Uh, that that uh, completes our our uh, update as far as the the grant funding that we've been receiving, how we, how we are initially planned for it. Again, those plans are are living documents so that we can, we can adjust those as the board sees fit. Um, and and but then we wanted to make sure that the public sees that we did receive the money and how we're spending it. Uh, and if any of, um, if any of the nonprofit agencies or now that we've, we've got additional money that we we will hope to start working with some of the smaller businesses as well. And any questions from the, from the commissioners?
Mike, I guess I would uh, would would ask, is there any action that needs to be taken by the board to allow this process to continue forward? Uh, it seems like you've been very successful in getting uh, the assistance to the places where it was needed. Uh, and I applaud you and staff uh, for those efforts. Um, is there anything that you need from us today in order to keep that process flowing? Or is it, or is that already in place?
Uh, I I think we're in place. I think what what we would just like for you is sort of endorse what we've done, which I think you just have. And then please, um, you're you're out and about in the community. Uh, if you're hearing some issues, uh, whether it's protective equipment uh, or anything else that we're, we're able to do, um, please let us know what you're hearing. Uh, and then as we we come up, we, the staff and the board will need to work again, as we look, start looking at these small business opportunities for uh, to come up with a plan there. So I think that will be our next one. Hopefully, we can have something uh, um, established or or maybe even um, ready to go that we can present back to you at the regular meeting. We may get it added to the agenda at the regular meeting.
Excellent. Are there other comments from board members about this process? Sounds like everybody is satisfied and quiet. Um, so thank, thank you for for those efforts. And we will move now to item three point five uh, from Finance, our general obligation and limited obligation bond refunding update. And we are happy to have Susan Fairington with us for that information.
Good afternoon. I wanted to update you back in May. We came to you um, asking or requesting that we would be able to uh, look at uh, funding opportunities for refunding our GEO bonds and our limited obligation bonds. And we did work with the underwriter and the um, bond attorney and we were able to um, refund a portion of the um, funds. Uh, back in May, we were anticipating maybe, you know, several million dollars in savings. Um, that was not, been, we've not been able to realize that so far, but um, just wanted to give you an update with what we have done. So in July, we completed our refinancing of our Series two thousand thirteen general obligation bonds and also our COPs and LOBs from two thousand eleven and and ten. and also our COPs and LOBs from 2011 and 10A. The refinancing resulted in over $500,000 in savings to the county for FY21 budget and over $100,000 in additional savings in FY22. So about $600,000 in savings that we're going to be able to realize. And I will have this a chart for you and your reports for your regular meeting in August so you can have this, so you don't have to previously write it down right now. But in early April, the market conditions suggested that we could also refund our 2016 LOBs, which is where we're going to have the biggest savings. However, due to COVID-19 purchasers who had been active on deals with maturities that they drew back, resulting in limited investor interest, lower escrow investment rates along with widening credit spreads also resulted in limited savings in the public market bond sale. So we continue to monitor those LOBs 2016 and hope that maybe in the future, we might be able to refund them and realize some savings. Just for a little bit more detail, for our general obligation bonds, we had four bids that we received for the 2013 bonds, and we received a 1.4% interest rate, which is great because some of our coupons and stuff were like 3% and 5%. So that was a great saving. So the breakdown for that, and it will be in your chart at the next meeting, is 2021 savings of $182,000, and then we have overall savings of $249,000. Now for our LOBs, which were 2010, 11, excuse me, 11B, 11C, we had a 1.15% interest rate that we were able to realize, which helped us and just have savings of $270,000 for our FY21 budget. So that did help us for our budget for this year and for next year. As of last week, we did have another savings opportunity that was brought to us and we're going to take advantage of for our LOBs 2010A. Now these will be paid off during the fiscal year '21. Well, we were supposed to pay them off in April, but by paying them off in September, we're going to save $50,000 by paying early. We're not earning interest on those funds, so I feel comfortable that, you know, going with the suggestion of our bond attorney and our underwriter, that by going ahead and paying them off, they're already budgeted in this fiscal year, just paying them off early, then we're going to save $50,000 in interest. So that was the opportunity. That's the kind of things that they're constantly looking for us, and the value of having an underwriter and a bond attorney, they're constantly looking at the markets and seeing the opportunities for us to be able to refund our debt and save taxpayers' money, which we all think we all want to be able to do. So like I said, we're constantly looking for other savings, but right now, that is the update I have to present to you for tonight, and you will have a chart in your report section for your August 17 meeting. If there's any questions?
Any questions for Susan? Thank you. We always are delighted to hear when you're saving the taxpayers' money. So we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, we move now to item 3.6 from Infrastructure and Asset Management, Courthouse Expansion Project Update. I think that the public will be interested to hear this. We're seeing barricades going up and roads being rerouted and lots of activity. So we're delighted to have Kyle Billifer with us to update us on all those happenings.
Good evening. Yes, update for the courthouse project. In terms of the milestones over the past 30 days, we've installed the new ceiling, finished and painted the walls. We've completed a large electrical shutdown that took a lot of county staff and contractor staff. We have relocated the backup generator for the courthouse, however, it is not tied in yet, so that facility is still without backup power. We should have that tied in by this weekend. We've tied into the new water service on Corbin. We've started the utility tie-ins on Means Avenue, and that's the area that you see dug up at the intersection of Means and Union, and we've started the elevator installation. Over the next 30 days, we will replace the historic courthouse water feed. We will bring the utilities from Union Street to within the site. We will complete the actual elevator that is going in the 1975 courthouse. That's part of the enabling project to be able to transport the inmates. We will complete the interior finishes, complete all the inspection, turn the space over, salvage a few remaining items that Infrastructure and Asset Management wants to utilize at other facilities, and then they will start the demolition of the actual courthouse annex building, and that is tentatively scheduled for August 24th. So I'm sure that's the date when everybody will see things start to actually happen there when they take down the building. So again, that's tentatively set for August 24th, and I did provide some pictures if Lauren could share them. So that first picture shows an actual rooftop unit being taken off the courthouse annex. We're actually utilizing that exact piece of equipment is going to go with the new operations center on Cabarrus Avenue. We're able to reuse three of the four units that came off of it. The second picture shows the new water service in Corbin. If you can scroll to the next picture. That shows the actual temporary transformer that'll be used to run the tower frame that will go up at the beginning of GMP2, and it also shows the relocated electrical service for the historic courthouse. And the last picture shows the new water vault that is in Corbin for the facility.
Yeah, Kyle, can you make those pictures larger?
I can't, but I would hope that Lauren can, sir.
There you go. Can you get it off of the? You're only using about a third of this, or a third of, or half the screen. There you go. Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren. So that kind of shows, those are the milestones over the last 30 days, and obviously, moving forward, the most important thing is the actual demolition of the courthouse annex. And yes, you've seen all the construction barriers, the fences go up, the next thing you'll see is all the signage and banners start to go up on that construction fence. Are there any questions about that update? Are there any questions anybody has about the courthouse project?
Thank you, Kyle. I'm sure we will be hearing lots about this for a long time as it proceeds. And so we've moved to item 3.7, which is also, Kyle, with an update on the Frankless Park Barn Rebuild Project.
Yes, wanted to provide an update to the board on the project, including the updates on our visioning process, our programming processes, the site selection, different site selection process that we went through with staff as we walked the park, and then also kind of provide an insurance claim update. And I would ask that Lauren would share the attachments. So this is the design mission statement. This was put through after a series of meetings that we had with the Parks Commission and staff. This has been reviewed by staff and approved, so I will go ahead and read through it. The goal of this project is to create a timeless event space that will fosters a sense of community for its citizens by integrating, connecting, and complementing Frankless Park and Cabarrus County citizens. It respects the long history of the barn while mindfully looking towards the future, strengthens Frankless Park Barn as an icon of the Cabarrus County community, and provides multifunctional rentable spaces, support spaces, and infrastructure that will attract people and generate revenue for the park and the county. That's actually a historical picture of the actual first barn being built. So we've used that kind of as a guideline that was, came from a lot of our discussions, different visioning and programming meetings that we had with the Parks Commission and staff. So we have gone through all those processes, and as one other update, we have put out a survey to the public. It's been up for about two weeks now, two and a half weeks, and we're getting all of those comments back, communications and outreach. Kasia's team was able to get that out for us, and those questions were generated both by the architect, Deputy County Manager Marshall, and the Parks Department, Active Living and Parks Department. So those were put out, and we're starting to get a lot of that information in so that we can understand better what goes into the schematic design and the overall programming of the space. One of the major points that we had to kind of come to a consensus on in this programming and site selection contract was the actual site selection. Lauren, if you can scroll to the next attachment, that'd be great. So we started off with three different locations that we were looking at throughout the park. County Manager Downs had asked the team to make sure that we evaluated other sites, not just the site of the former barn, so that we made sure we kind of crossed all those bridges and looked at any different avenues that might give us a better location. We looked at all three of those areas, and we immediately crossed off the first area, which is, if you're driving in the park, it would be to your left where the tennis courts are across from the overflow parking lot. And we took that site off. That site has a challenging soil. It also has some deficiencies in terms of utilities, and it's also where we are planning our future amenity growth in the park, which will involve some sort of water feature. So by putting the barn there, we kind of were taking away that future growth in that space and also adding a pretty large expense in terms of the infrastructure that we have to go in there. The next spot that we looked at was kind of a bluff that overlooks the lake, and it actually is built on some of what is the original water bars or water breaks when that was farmland. We looked at that area, and while the aesthetics of overlooking the lake would have been beautiful, parking and the location to some of the other shelters would have been extremely challenging. It would have been a good venue, but it would not be able to be a venue that offers the multitude of amenities that the current location of the barn offers. So we shifted back to the original site that the barn stood on and came up with an option of a kind of a, an A and a B. And really, that basically boils down to, we're going to look at the cost of what it would be to build the barn and the exact footprint that it existed in prior to burning down versus shifting it to where the playground site is. Lauren, would you please scroll to the next one, please? So that yellow box shifting, that's actually where the playground is now, and there are some aesthetic and infrastructure, I guess, additions or value adds by shifting it to the site where the playground is. The proximity to that overflow parking lot you're looking at near the softball fields is one of those. The other option is it allows us to not have to take down so much of a tree canopy. And also, and I really didn't realize this until we actually walked the entire site and looked at it, it does provide a much cleaner and clearer view down that hill and down that bluff to the main entrance. So the design team, Infrastructure and Asset Management, and ALPS, and Deputy County Manager Marshall, as we start to develop these two plans, we'll be bringing them back to tell you which one we decided, but we're trying to kind of go in between the costs and win and get the most bang for our buck. And I'm open to answer any questions that you might have.
Kyle, I would have a question about, and I'm sure that some of the folks watching the meeting have heard the things that we've said about receiving public input and getting the opinions of our citizens on that project. And you mentioned the online opportunity. Has that been, do you have a gauge of if folks are participating in that so far, or has it been a little slow, or can you give a little update on that?
If Kasia's on the line, she might be able to tell you the exact numbers. I did review the 48 pages of submittals you got. Kasia, do you know how many people that actually equates to?
Well, 48 pages, that gives us a little indication, so there has been quite a bit of activity. And also, the Parks Commission has had a lot of input into this process as well, correct?
Yes, they have. We've actually been on two virtual meetings with them and some follow-up emails back and forth via the ALPS Department. And a lot of what I reviewed in terms of the public input mimicked, in a lot of cases, what the Parks Commission was telling us. There wasn't anything that I read that was completely out of left field at all.
Yeah, one of the advantages we have, of course, is of our previous users, we have their email addresses, so we were able to send those surveys directly to previous users who could respond to someone who's already been in the facility and could tell us what they liked, what they didn't like, and other things they would like to see there.
Excellent. And also, as a little bit of a commercial for our various boards and commissions, you know, we talked about, at the draft, talked about the end of all of our regular meetings, that we usually have openings on those boards and commissions that citizens can sign up to serve, and this is a good example of how important those are. And we depend on those folks to help us with decisions like this and to provide input and also to gather input from others in the community. So thank you for that effort and that explanation.
Commissioner Morris?
This is Londa, and I believe on those 48 pages, I went through, it was 650 people that had responded in the about two and a half weeks.
Wow, that's significant, I think. Thank you. So I guess I'm, well, the question is, so the sheet, the slide we're looking at is 1D, and it made it sound like we were still analyzing the site, but you've got a scoring sheet there that pretty much shows that 1A outscores 1B. Is that just an example of going through, or is that your?
We didn't come up with 1B until we actually were on the site going through the original three, so they still need to vet out some of those numbers. Really, it deals with some of the parking. That overflow parking lot that you're looking at that screen might provide more points to make 1B a lot more attractive.
Okay, so I did hear correctly, it's still being analyzed.
Yes, yes, it is. We started with relocations, and once we got down to looking at the current site, we started looking at shifting it. And really, when we first started, we were hesitant because of the playground, but if you really analyze the line of sight and the aesthetic view, I think 1B offers a lot and the ability to get to more parking quicker and add some things in there. And I know Londa's on, she can probably add to that. That was very attractive when we started to talk about that because we do have some traffic issues up there at the current parking lot, especially when the other side of the park, I'll call it the athletic part of the park, is being utilized fully on Sundays. It can be a little hairy up there in terms of pedestrians getting out of their cars to go up to the barn versus folks trying to get their kids either to a softball game or baseball game or a soccer game.
And Kyle, would you relocate a park, I mean, a playground somewhere?
Yes, yes. And we actually just, not just, but several years ago, put that playground in. So yes, that was one of the first few things Londa and I started checking with people. Yes, that can be relocated. It is not the easiest labor task in the world because of the way that that equipment is set in concrete, but yes, it can be done. That can be relocated, and quite frankly, a lot of it needs to be dealing with not just the parking, but analyzing that tree canopy and what we can do with that.
Yeah, I will add one additional thing. You were talking about the traffic considerations, and I'm not even sure if we've actually discussed this in one of our public meetings, but over the last month, we were successful in getting the state of North Carolina to deed that property over to Cabarrus County, along with some additional property, more than what we had been leasing in the past. So as we go through the process, and we have a 90-day period of conducting some surveys and establishing some boundaries and rules and regulations as to how we will use that property, there are potential opportunities for future methods of ingress and egress to the park as well. So that may also be of benefit to us.
Yes, sir. The last piece of my presentation was about the insurance claim. I've received the draft of the insurance claim, and I have a meeting set up with the actual policy. actual policy provider on Wednesday to go through that draft. And at that point, I'll be able to update the county manager. But at this point, it's just a draft. I have reviewed it. It is, I think there's been some things that might have been missed on that, so I'll be discussing that with the actual policy manager.
Thank you, sir. Any additional questions for Kyle? All right, thank you, sir. And we move now to item 3.8, and we are delighted to have Debbie Brannan with us for the Innovation and Technology Report.
Good evening. I'm happy to be here today. Let me share my desktop with you. Good evening, welcome to the August 2020 Innovation Report. In August, the employees are listening to overcoming bias, building authentic relationships across differences. Over the last few months, the Digital Book Club has focused on building skills for gratitude, appreciation, and communication. This month, we will work on becoming more self-aware of our own biases to help build authentic relations across differences. All humans are biased. We all harbor unconscious assumptions that we get that get in the way of our good intentions. This book uses vivid stories and fun activities to help us reflect on our personal experiences and uncover how our hidden biases are formed. By becoming more self-aware, we can control snap reactions and prevail over closed-mindedness. In the end, this book's central message is that you are not the problem, but you can be the solution. Today's Innovation Report aligns with the county's strategic initiative of being transparent and accountable government and the innovation initiative for continuous improvement. In July 2019, Cabarrus County released the details of a socially engineered business email compromise that diverted a vendor payment of $2.5 million into an account controlled by criminals. Business email compromise, also known as BEC, is a sophisticated scam targeting businesses with a spoofed or compromised email account to trick an organization's personnel into sending funds to financial accounts controlled by criminals. Generally, these sophisticated attacks are looking for deep-pocket bid contract scenarios. Manufacturing, construction, real estate, and finance are the top three industries targeted. Today's Innovation Report is on how the county fell victim and responded to a business email compromise. We will review measures that were taken to prevent future compromises and continued innovation being implemented to mitigate future risk. Business email compromise has grown into a billion-dollar industry as cybercriminals use look-alike domains and display name deception to trick employees into depositing money into criminally-owned bank accounts. Scammers are using persistence and social engineering to trick firms into paying them for legitimate services. These attacks are difficult to detect, and like Cabarrus County, victims often don't know they've been scammed until a vendor notifies them that they have not been paid. According to the U.S. Treasury Department, U.S. businesses lose as much as $300 million per month to BEC scams. Payment invoice scams accounted for nearly half of those fraudulent transactions in 2018, causing more than $1.5 billion in business losses. Officials believe cybercriminals will continue to evolve this attack modality and these types of scams will continue to rise. So how did this happen to Cabarrus County? In November of 2018, a criminal sent a socially engineered, targeted phishing email to a Cabarrus County Schools AP specialist impersonating an employee of a construction company building a Cabarrus County school. The email asked how to enroll or modify their ACH payment information. The Cabarrus County Schools AP specialist forwarded the email to a Cabarrus County Schools AP supervisor. The Schools AP supervisor responded to the email that Cabarrus County Government issues payments for new school construction and copied a Cabarrus County Finance employee on that reply. That Cabarrus County Finance employee forwarded the email to a Cabarrus County Government AP technician. The Cabarrus County Government AP technician responded to the criminal with the appropriate forms to complete for vendor ACH payments. The criminal returned the completed forms with a bank letter via email. Through social engineering and multiple forwarded emails, the criminal obtained access to the appropriate AP person, creating the appearance of legitimacy. After exchanging emails and receiving seemingly valid documentation and signed approvals, the Cabarrus County Government AP technician updated the construction company vendor account with the criminal's banking information. In December 2018, the accounts payable process included a $25 million invoice payment to the construction company, and that payment was placed into the criminal's account. Due to the holidays, the real vendor did not notify Cabarrus County of the missing payment until January 2019. In retrospect, there were several subtle red flags that were not called in the targeted phishing email. Vendor's email address was one letter off from the legitimate email address. It was associate versus associates. In the subject, the employee receiving this request did not normally process these types of requests. There was an urgency in the warning, "I tried to call you yesterday, but I couldn't get you," creating a sense of urgency or creating a feeling that the employee might get in trouble, hoping to get them to respond immediately without thinking. And there was an ambiguous request in the body. What is the procedure for ACH payments, enrollment, or modifications for vendors? The requister didn't seem to know that the county processed construction invoices and the vendor had already enrolled in ACH with the county. For our incident response, once we were notified, an investigation was started as soon as the missing payment was reported. An audit of the accounts payable revealed a payment was indeed processed in December for the vendor. However, the bank account had been changed in November. The vendor was contacted and they verified the bank account on file was not associated with their company, and they had not requested a change. The bank, law enforcement, FBI, insurance company, and Cabarrus County IT departments were contacted immediately to start investigation of the fraud. The IT department placed a legal hold on all emails involved in the AP account changes and required all Cabarrus County employees to change their passwords. The Cabarrus County's network and email system were reviewed for unauthorized access or email rule creations and found no breaches. Finance switched all AP processing to paper checks until all vendors' changes could be audited to ensure there were no other accounts compromised. All other accounts were found to be valid. Cabarrus County has a multi-layered cybersecurity program in place to detect and respond to cybersecurity incidents. Cabarrus County receives over 30,000 emails per day on average, and 6,500 of those are filtered out as spam, and about 30 a day are blocked for containing malware. The Cabarrus County firewall blocks an average of 50 different threat types on a daily basis. On an average business day, we monitor and record 4.1 million authentication events, 35 million firewall events. Our endpoint protection processes 10,000 events per hour, and over 1.9 million unique files are processed. We believe Cabarrus County cybersecurity training is vital in today's environment. All county employees are required to complete annual training and are continuously tested to ensure they are following best cybersecurity practices. In the last six months, we have sent over 17,000 phishing tests to employees via email with only a 2.1% failure rate. The average failure rate for the government sector is 5.8. Cabarrus County is well under the average, however, as we experienced in November of 2018, it only takes one failure for the criminals to succeed. None of these cybersecurity measures prevented a socially engineered business email compromise through a spoofed email account that resulted in sending payment for legitimate services to a criminal's bank account. A good cybersecurity program can give employees a false sense of security. Therefore, we also emphasize departments need to develop best practices for manual and digital processes to protect the integrity of the county's data. All Cabarrus County departments, not just finance, should audit and review processes. We should never rely solely on email communication for authentication, and multi-factor authentication should be used for source and data validation. Cabarrus County hired Oklahoma-based accounts payable consultant Deborah Richardson to redesign vendor processes and audit our vendor files. She provided additional authentication techniques, internal controls, and best practices in vendor setup and maintenance to protect the county's vendor master file from future fraud. Vendor validation is a major challenge. How do you know the person you are communicating with is not a scammer? Paperwork and invoices can be forged. Phone numbers and emails can be easily spoofed with information publicly available on the internet. To meet this challenge, new multi-factor authentication and validation processes were implemented for new vendor setup and vendor account maintenance. Online verification services TinCheck and Guyact were subscribed to in order to validate the identities and bank account information of individuals and businesses. These services provide compliance assurance, address validation, bank account ownership, and status confirmation. In a moment, Deputy County Manager Rodney Harris will tell you about our next steps to implement vendor validation as a service, transferring some of that risk to a third party to provide additional insurance. But what about insurance? Cabarrus County does have cyber insurance, and generally, cyber insurance is designed to protect you through five distinct insuring agreements: network security, privacy liability, interruption to your business, media liability, errors and omissions. Cabarrus County's BEC was not covered under our current cyber insurance at that time. The email-initiated fraudulent impersonation losses do not fall within the scope of coverage under those five original tenants, as they are not losses resulting directly under any covered peril. Of the $2.5 million sent to the criminal's bank account, $776,000 was recovered. Cabarrus County only received about $75,000 from an insurance claim based on fraud. This led the county to look at additional insurance and risk response strategies for vendor management. A social engineering policy has been added to our cyber insurance policy, and Deputy County Manager Rodney Harris is going to review additional risk response actions taken And I'm going to control this for you, Rodney, for the vendor management update.
Yeah, thank you for that, Debbie. So I wanted to start with pointing out, because I think it's important for the board and the public to understand, is that the driver of this incident was a process that most local governments and a lot of private business deploy across the country. And so this was not neglect on the part of any employee. This was an incident that could happen to any of us. And I think the way we have responded is something that will protect our community as we move forward. And I think we looked at that through the lens of sort of a risk response strategy. And so as an organization, we obviously cannot just accept that this is a risk we're going to be dealing with. We also can't avoid it. We have to do business with companies. We have to make payments. And so that left us with two options. Debbie has touched on some of those, which is we can mitigate the risk. And the other, which is sort of the insurance example, is you figure out a way to transfer it to a third party. And so I want to walk through over the next few slides how we've made progress on both of those fronts. Go to the next slide. So Debbie mentioned a little bit of this through our work with a third-party consultant. We did put in place a lot of process changes that would reduce the likelihood of a future incident. And so communication with vendors was centralized within our finance department. We created a substitute W-9 form for vendors to complete in order to become a county vendor. And then more importantly, we put in place third-party verifications that Debbie mentioned earlier, Guyact being one of those, to make sure that we are validating key information, particularly the legal and remit addresses for vendors. Next slide. In addition, we further segregated duties, and we currently have roughly one and a half full-time equivalent positions that are solely or almost entirely dedicated to vendor management. That's how much of a workload this has created. We also added additional approval layers to make sure that when we have vendors being set up or payments outgoing, that we have additional layers of oversight. And then we also placed all of the vendors into a stop status if they had not been used over the past 16 months. And this gave us an opportunity to verify their information before we did business with them again. And so as I mentioned earlier, while these mitigation efforts are essential, the financial burden of any future misstep has, to this point, remained with the county. So to that end, we sought and found a way to transfer that risk to a third party. Last September, we entered into an agreement with PaymentWorks for $55,000 annually. Through their platform, the county will be able to provide vendors a self-service portal, which is a best practice, that allows vendors to manage their own information, whether it's banking, addresses, et cetera, and takes the county out of that role, which frees up staff time. They also have already automated many of the processes that we have put in place that are rather time-intensive for our staff. So that includes the VIN and social security number verification, bank account ownership verification, department checks, and also address verifications. They have automated all of that within their platform. While each of these enhancements are terrific in and of themselves, it is the fraud protection component of their solution that is the most attractive for us as a county. And so our agreement with PaymentWorks provides the county fraud protection for all of our vendor payments. If a payment is routed to the wrong account after we go live, PaymentWorks will be responsible up to $3 million per payment. And so you'll recall, this incident was about $2.5 million. So if that were to occur after we go live with PaymentWorks, they would have been responsible for that full $2.5 million. Another benefit is freeing up the one and a half FTEs that we currently have in finance focused on vendor registration. This more efficient process will allow those employees to shift their focus to other duties. And then as I stated before, vendors will gain greater control over managing their own information within the system. And then lastly, I think it's important to mention that some of the terms of the agreement focus on the financial stability of the company. Because as you can imagine, that assurance of up to $3 million is not much if they are not financially solvent. And so we have the right, under the agreement, to review their financial documents annually and to make sure that they are financially stable enough to meet any commitments in the future, should an incident occur. And so I just want to close with an overview of what this new process will look like. And so we're hoping that we can roll this out in its first iteration in September. We're expecting a second transition, which would be when We're expecting a second transition, which would be when our integrated system is online. So that would be integrating our financial system, Munis, with the Payment Works solution. But our first initial go-live will not have those two components integrated. But essentially, county staff would invite a vendor to register through the Payment Works system. The vendor would create an account, submit their registration, and they would include all of the required documentation. That vendor information, rather than being reviewed by county staff, would be screened and verified by Payment Works. Once county staff approved the vendor in the system, they would become active and available for use. On the payment side, in short, we would do what we currently do, which is we would create a payment file that, right now, we send to our bank. The only change in this arrangement is that, rather than send that to our bank, we would send it to Payment Works. They would then add the bank account information to that file, send it to the bank, and then it would come through workflow for our approval. So this does a key thing, which is it gets us out of the banking business with vendors. We would no longer store their bank account information on county servers. It would be held in Payment Works, and we would reduce our liability around that information, which, again, further reduces our risk. And so I'd close in saying, we're hoping that the go-live will be September, that we will be able to provide this fraud protection for the county as of that time. And we are excited about that in the days and weeks and months ahead.
Thank you, Rodney and Debbie. That was an excellent explanation of that entire process. I would ask one question. Debbie, when you were describing the process, I think you mentioned November of 2018. I believe you meant to say 2.5 billion, and you said 25 billion?
That's correct. It was 2.5, not 25.
2.5 million, yeah. I was afraid that that kind of stood out to me. And I verified, I said, did I hear that correctly? But it was 2.5 million, which is certainly a substantial amount, but far better than 25. And the other question that I had, you just used the term, Rodney. You said debarment check? I don't understand what that is.
So that is primarily focused on vendors that have been debarred from doing business with either the state or the federal government. So oftentimes, that's because they haven't performed well, or they haven't made a payment, or they haven't paid their taxes. There's any number of reasons, but there are literally hundreds of debarment lists that this database will check against to make sure that the vendor is reputable.
Excellent, thank you. Well, that was an excellent report, and I think that is of great benefit to the public to understand the exact process and how that occurred, and what we're doing to make sure it doesn't ever happen again. Are there other questions, commissioners, for Rodney or Debbie, or comments that you'd like to make?
I just had a quick question out of curiosity. The 16 months on the stop of a vendor hadn't been paid? Is there some sort of statistical analysis of the 16 months? Or was that a recommendation from one of the third parties? Or how was that timeline determined?
That came out of when we were meeting with Deborah Richardson and with finance and just some of our processes here. I think a lot of it had to do with some of the social service payments we have. But I think industry standards probably adhere, but we have foster parents and things of that nature. That 16 months just made a little bit more sense for some of those processes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, other questions or comments? Okay, well, thank you very much. That was an excellent report. We are delighted now to move to item 3.9, and we're very pleased to have Sheriff Dan Shaw with us to provide a quarterly report. Welcome, Sheriff.
Good evening, commissioners. I appreciate you having me this evening, and I wanted to come and give you an update on sheriff's operations, a number of things that are going on to update you. I'm going to start with, generally, law enforcement operations are running at full capacity through COVID-19. We've had to make a number of adjustments, as you can imagine, but all our employees are working. Unfortunately, we don't have any employees that can work remotely. So we've been challenged by a number of things with COVID-19, but have adjusted in different ways to help the public still get sheriff's office business completed, but doing it safely as well. It's not without some impact. We've had some services that have been delayed. Fingerprinting is one of those, obviously. When somebody needs fingerprinting for a professional certification, such as a nurse or a nursing assistant, a daycare worker, they need those fingerprints for the process of getting that certification. And that creates a close contact with not only our employee, but with the public as well. So we've worked through that with PPE. We've brought on additional staff and reassigned some staff to help with some of that backlog to make sure those essential employees are getting those certifications and we're getting that process moving forward for them. To give you an update on the detention center, our current population at the detention center is 190 inmates. That's a significant lowering of that number. Normally, pre-COVID-19, we would have an average daily population of about 340 to 350 inmates in our detention center. So working through the court system and in a number of different measures, we've been able to reduce that population and prevent that population from growing unless there was a, you know, a public safety concern or a concern as to an individual showing up for their court date. So we continue to work through that. We've done some enhancements to the detention center, having some negative pressure systems installed in two male pods and two female pods. That creates a better environment for new people coming into the detention facility so that we can quarantine them for 14 days in a negative pressure system that does not allow the air to recirculate in the detention center. That's helped us dramatically. We've instituted a number of medical protocols through our medical vendor. You know, and I'm very happy to say that, other than one inmate that we received from another facility in another part of the state, we have not had any COVID-19 cases among the inmate population. We were able to identify that inmate immediately, get them tested, get them identified as being positive, and getting them isolated with no impact on our community, our detention community whatsoever. So we've got a lot of stringent protocols in place, and we're going to continue to do those to make sure that the inmates that are in our care and custody are taken care of medically, and we're doing everything possible to prevent COVID-19 from entering our detention facility. One of the things that was initiated a number of months ago was our policy review, sheriff's office policy review. We've been updating and revising our policy. It is complete now. We also took into account a number of policies and national recommendations that we felt needed to be added or implemented in our policy program. So one example is the duty to intervene. While that's been there, it was not laid out in policy, so we've put that in there. We've addressed chokeholds. That was a national concern as well. They were never authorized, but again, putting those within your policy. We're working with a contractor who has helped us develop best models of policy. We also put into place a software program that allows our employees to review policy online. They're actually notified when policies change. They also have to have a read receipt, and it is also time to ensure that they have the appropriate amount of time to read the policy before they can even sign off on having read the policy. So we're doing a number of things in that regard to make sure we're staying up to date, current, and we're utilizing the best law enforcement policies that are being recommended across the country currently. We also have a body camera project that's ongoing. I've spoken with y'all before about that. We're moving forward, hopefully, hearing very soon on our grant request to the U.S. Department of Justice for our grant, which will help offset the cost of the body camera program. We're also looking at technology that eliminates some of the human error that comes involved when you turn a body camera on and off. Sometimes you have to actually activate the camera manually. But there's been a number of technological advancements that allow that camera to be automatically turned on through the initiation of lights and sirens in the vehicle, the utilization of a taser. All of those can utilize Bluetooth technology to make sure all the officers in an area that their body cameras come on automatically. So we're excited about that. Chief Bailey will talk to you a little bit more about that later. But that goes along with integrating also with our existing car camera system and really getting the most out of the body camera program that we can, because it provides transparency. It provides an opportunity for us to review interactions with citizens as well as substantiate charges, as well as investigate complaints. So we're really excited about that. The employees that will be wearing them unanimously voted for body cameras, wanting to move in that direction, so we're doing that. Our goal for deployment currently is in October. We will be stepping through some various steps over the next couple of months to get the equipment deployed, to train the officers on the equipment, and hopefully, we will be up and running by mid-October, at the very latest late October. The next area I wanted to touch on was in our records division. In the area of, our records division handles all of our gun purchase permits as well as our concealed carry permits. I got some statistics, just to give you an update. In 2019, from January 1 to August 1, last year, we processed or received 1,219 gun purchase permits for handguns. So far this year, during that same timeframe, we've received 3,082 gun purchase applications. So more than double the workload in that area. And remarkably, we're still turning those around in 14 days. So they're staying extremely busy. In our concealed carry permit applications, typically, once an appointment is made, we are able to turn those around in 60 days. There's a number of agencies that are involved in concealed carry permits, so some of the delays are out of our control, be it the mental health check, the criminal history check, and the state's final processing of that concealed carry permit as well. Currently, we have 854 people that are waiting for their appointment to come up. Compare that to last year. At this same time, we have between 300 and 400 people waiting for their appointments. So you can see there's been a significant increase in both gun purchase permit applications as well as concealed carry permit applications. So we're moving through that, and as I said earlier, we've reassigned some folks temporarily in order to help bring some of those turnaround times down and to get those fingerprint processes, which is a part of this as well, through. In the area of community outreach, I've personally attended multiple events over the past several weeks here in the county, to include several community discussions that we did through Zoom with different groups, so virtual meetings, to have discussions about law enforcement in our community, equality in law enforcement, and the application of law, which have been very positive and have developed some great relationships, renewed some old ones and shored up existing ones. So we have also established an employee work group here at the sheriff's office to talk about, to get together and talk about racial equality within the workplace as well as within the community. So it was important to me that we include our employees in those discussions, making sure that we're creating the right work environment as well as how we impact the community as far as race relations are concerned. We're moving forward with additional meetings and programs. A lot of this group is making recommendations for outside groups to come in and have programs for the employees here. We, of course, are having to operate under those COVID-19 restrictions because a lot of these programs are interactive and, quite frankly, are tough to do in the virtual environment. But we're moving forward nonetheless. In the area of community events, we're going to be holding a drive-through community event in collaboration with Covenant Presbyterian Church. They're located in our Fisher Town community, which is in more of the northwest area of our county. And we're going to be giving away masks, allowing citizens an opportunity to not only pick up the mask, get questions answered as it relates about the governor's orders and mask-wearing restrictions, those types of things, so they'll be able to interact with officers there, get their questions answered, as well as providing them with information about other programs we're doing in the community and also employment opportunities that we have here at the sheriff's office. So we're excited about Covenant Presbyterian partnering with us, and we'll be holding that event later this month. We actually are meeting this week to firm up the date and all the details surrounding it. In October, National Night Out, which I know a number of y'all are familiar with, has been moved to October. So we're keeping our fingers crossed that we're going to be able to have National Night Out in October. But we're doing a countywide National Night Out program this year. We're doing it in conjunction with other first responding agencies. We're going to be holding it at the arena. A lot of interactive things for folks to do. We've got a number of people that have made donations. We're going to be able to provide food and refreshments, and just an opportunity for the community to come out, interact with law enforcement, learn more about emergency services, and just have a good evening together. So we're excited about that, and like I said, hopefully, in October, we'll still be able to hold it. If not, we're not going to cancel it. We're just going to postpone it as well. So we'll have a number of things for the kids, backpacks, you know, masks, just a number of things there for them to come out and enjoy. To end on an even more positive note, personnel-wise here at the sheriff's office, we're fully staffed. We have a few vacancies, but we have folks in line to fill those vacancies. So our recruitment continues to be very robust. Just because we don't have vacancies doesn't mean we're not going to be out there recruiting. And I want to thank the board, especially your actions and what you've done in support of the sheriff's office has allowed us to be very competitive within the law enforcement employment market, and I'm very proud of the quality of employees that we have, the job they're doing. And we receive so many thank yous on a weekly basis from the community. And I also want to take an opportunity just to thank the community. We've had an outpouring of support. We appreciate all of those folks, and just their very kind-hearted remarks and support for us means a lot and goes a long way. So we're going to continue to do our very best, and I'll be glad to answer any questions. I know I went through a lot of information there pretty quickly, but I'll be glad to answer or expound on anything you want me to.
Questions for the sheriff?
Just a quick comment. I'm glad to hear that you continue to recruit, and you're at full staff. Because I know that has historically, at times, been a problem, and I think that's, goes a long way when you're full and ready to go and do the proper training. I think that's the best course of action. And I'm also pleased to hear that you personally are out in the community, because I think that's important as well. And I've seen you speak in the community, and you're very good at it. And so I think that's just a good step and a good thing for your, the officer. And so I think that's just a good step and a good thing for your, for your, the officer of the department, your entire, your entire organization.
Thank you, sir.
I would just say ditto to Commissioner Kiger. He beat me to it. So thank you for what you're doing, and it's just exciting to hear the reports and how things are going, particularly in this time.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Any additional questions or comments? Well, thank you so much for sharing all that information with us and with the public as well. I can certainly say from my personal standpoint that I received so many compliments and good comments about the work that you and your officers and staff do at the sheriff's office. It makes me proud to be a part of Cabarrus County Government. And certainly, I think it provides a great sense of comfort to our citizens out in the community to know and understand all the good work that you do. So thank you very much. And we look forward to hearing back, hearing from you again perhaps next quarter.
Absolutely. And I will be bringing you some more information, some more statistics, and also kind of updating you on different divisions within the sheriff's office because I think the public would be interested in that as well. But I must say again, appreciate your leadership, your support of our agency, and again, the community's support has been outstanding. So thank you for this opportunity.
You're certainly welcome. And I said next quarter, but you're welcome to come sooner than that. Anytime you feel necessary. So thank you.
Thank you.
We will move now to discussion items for action at our regular meeting in two weeks. First up is item 4.1, and that is appointments to boards and committees. And you have all received a report of that. I think the only one this month is the Library Board of Trustees. They have a position designated for the City of Concord. The, I serve on that, that Board of Trustees as an ex officio member. So I will say that those folks take that very seriously. They've looked at those applicants and that they've made a recommendation to us. So if anybody has any questions or comments, feel free to make them at this time. And hearing none, seeing no facial expressions as best we can see with these cameras, we will move to item 4.2 from Active Living in Parks, WW Flow Park lease discussion. And we are delighted to have Londa Strong with us to talk about that one.
Thank you so much. Always a pleasure to be here and bring something to you. The information on the agenda sheet, I just want to touch on a little bit of that because there's a little history there. A lot of people don't know that WW Flow Park is actually owned by Cabarrus County but operated by the City of Concord Parks and Recreation Department. And we received that land from Mary and Harry Brown on two different occasions, one part in 1995 and another in 2007. And that was through a trust that they had set up, excuse me. WW Flow Park, when it became a park in 2002, was dedicated, and it was named for WW Flow, who was Mary Flow Brown's father. And he was very instrumental in the textile movement in Cabarrus County. So like I said, the City of Concord has been operating that facility since 2002 when it opened. Everything that has happened there, they've done. We've had, we had an agreement with them that anytime they needed to do something, we had to give approval, whether it was a renovation or an addition or whatever it was. And they have done really well. They kept up with everything, keeping the equipment up. There's several big pieces of playground equipment right now that need replaced. We have the additional acreage on the other side of Central Heights Drive that they have some plans for as well. And, excuse me, they have asked that we deed this to them, the City of Concord, simply based on the amount of money that they're looking at putting into this facility. They have plans for it. Lauren, I believe there's an attachment to this that shows the far side of Central Heights Drive that has their plan. If you can put that up, please. Yeah, so you see, the pretty green is the master plan that they have for the additional acreage. And the left side of Central Heights Drive is what is currently developed. And they have plans to make the parking lot larger, extend it toward the playground, move the playground over closer to the ball field, and then put a soccer field back there where that elongated area looks on the behind centerfield of the number one ball field. So they have a lot of plans and a lot of money that they want to put into it, and they would feel more comfortable, even though we have a great working relationship with them, and you all do as well. In 10 years from now, when I'll be gone and you all will be gone, it may not be great. And so, and I understand that. And they want to put, they want to have it deeded to them so that they can put their money into it without fear of county coming back and saying, oh, we want to take that. Park and Recreation Trust Fund Grant was used in developing Phase One. And I have met with the Park and Recreation Trust Fund Authority and asked them if it would put us in any kind of jeopardy of ever receiving another grant if we said, oh, we don't want to, we've, we're giving this away. And they said absolutely not, actually. Basically, that if the City of Concord was planning on continuing to develop it and we weren't giving it away or deeding it to them because we couldn't afford to keep it up, then they would be perfectly fine with that. It would not affect our standing with the Park and Recreation Trust Fund or the Land and Water Conservation Fund at all. So if they're, the Park Commission has reviewed this. I can't really tell you exactly which meeting because I'm lost in my months right now. Since March 13, I'm not sure which month it is, but it was somewhere back a few months ago, we discussed this, and they were fine with it as well. So if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. Tried to get as much history in that agenda item as possible so that we didn't have to go over that. But feel free to have, answer anything that I can. Yeah, that's, that's phase, the second phase of Phase One.
Londa, this is Lynn.
Yes, sir.
I wanted to ask you, I'm certainly okay with this because I see it as a win-win for the citizens of Cabarrus County. And, you know, it surely is going to be a good thing. But I wanted to ask, did the city, do they have any indication as to how long it's going to be before they do any improvements? And if they do, are they going to improve the site that's already being used or the site that's on the other side of Central Heights Drive?
They're going to improve this existing Phase One side first. And then I believe it was 2022 is when they will start on the other side.
Okay.
Yeah, they have their capital improvement plan set out that for, through about the next 20 years. That shows what they plan to do on that side.
Thank you, Londa.
Oh, thank you. And like Lynn said, he's good with that. The city's operating it. Most people don't really care who owns it or who operates it, as long as it has what they need. And probably half the people don't know that we own that property, and the City of Concord is the one that operates it anyway. End result is like Lynn said, the citizens have something that they want, and that's the purpose.
Londa, the terms of the trust, I noticed the, our information say that Mr. Davis has been aware of the request. Does that require any approval from them? Or what's the status on the bequest from Ms. Brown?
Mr. Davis has been, or is supposed to have been talking with the trust to make sure that this is fine with them. We met with him, again, maybe March, somewhere through there. And I haven't got a most recent email back from him. He was out for a little while with some illness. So I haven't heard back from him recently, but we wanted to go ahead and get this rolling.
Well, I'll tell you, to me, it looks, it's a great deal like the discussion that I mentioned earlier about the county leasing property from the state for Frank Lispar, which we requested be deeded to us because of the amount of money that we had invested in it and plan to invest in the future. This seems to be an identical situation. I certainly understand why the City of Concord would desire that. And if by us conveying that property to them, they are willing to make the substantial investment to provide these opportunities that you've shown, I'm certainly in favor of it. And would welcome any other comments from other commissioners.
No, I think you're 100% correct in your statement.
Okay. Very good. Any other questions before we move to the next item? Thank you, Londa.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move now to item 4.3. And this is a request from the Humane Society of Cabarrus County. We are delighted to have Judy Sims with us from the Humane Society. And we will let County Manager Mike Downs kick us off on that one.
Okay, well, I'm going to play the role of myself, and I'm going to play the role of Ms. Sims because I just got an email from her. She had an emergency with one of the animals out there that she had to go retrieve. So she apologizes. She was on here initially, but she got a phone call to go to a rescue. So Ms. Sims had contacted our office about a couple of weeks ago, I think it was. And their concerns, several concerns, is they've, they've been working very hard. They've been pulling animals from our shelter. Let me start all over. They used to run our shelter, the Humane Society did, and did a very good job of it. But then it was a transition where we brought it back in-house. But even though they were no longer running, they're still a very good friend of the shelter. They are the, they pull the majority of the animals. And if they hadn't been pulling them over the last few months and talking with the sheriff's staff and the shelter staff, then they would have been in trouble trying to move those animals out. And as, if we have to keep them there, there's, there's occupancy, there's, it's just too many dogs or cats in the area, plus its additional cost to feed, and then ultimately, there are other options. But we didn't have to go that route. They began, they pulled over the last year or so, they pulled over 66 dogs now, 66 dogs. And not all of them were healthy, so they took on those, those medical costs when they pulled them as well, and then moved them on to either homes or to other breeders. But what they're asking for, they, you know, as with some of the other agencies that we work with, especially the nonprofits, through this last several months, they've not been able to hold their annual fundraisers that they would typically hold. So their revenues are getting stretched, their activity has increased at the same time, and so they're, they're struggling to maintain business. And again, if they are struggling to maintain business, then that's going to put a struggle on our shelter as well if they're not pulling the animals. So as we talked earlier, the coronavirus relief fund does not allow you to, to replace lost revenues. But I think this is a worthy request simply because of the benefit that they do for our shelter operations in the county. They're, they have asked, Ms. Sims has asked for $20,000 to help them to maintain their operations until they're up and get back to the opportunity to do their fundraising. Like I said, that you're not allowed to use the coronavirus money. But what I would recommend, if you so choose to support this, is that you have four contingency funds that are available to them to use for this purpose. So I can answer any questions. Again, I apologize for Ms. Sims, but she did, she had to go out and do a rescue. She said, that's what we do. And I said, that's exactly right. So any questions? The sheriff is online as well as Chief Bailey, and they can answer any questions as to how valuable they are to their operation as well.
Questions, commissioners? I see some head nodding and shaking. So it sounds, sounds like...
I don't have any questions, but I am in support of it.
Okay. Thank you. Well, it appears that we have a consensus of the board that approves going forward with this request. You know, when, when he, when he says they have pulled animals from the shelter, my interpretation of that means they have actually found homes for those animals. They've been adopted into new families and hopefully are living, living happy lives. So I think, I think that's what you mean when you say pulled, right?
They pull, they're pulling them from the shelter, and their business is exactly right is to find homes for these, for these animals so that they, like you said, they can have a family to be with. And that, that's, that's their business. And again, they have regular customers that are out there that they can get them to and to get them into a safe environment. Again, Chief Bailey is there, or the sheriff, he may could, either one could elaborate on that as well.
No, I would agree with, with the county manager. They, they do a substantial amount of work to help relieve the overcrowding in our shelters. So I know I spoke with Captain Taylor about this, and he was in concurrence with, with that assessment.
Thank you, Chief Bailey. Okay, as we have consensus on this item, we will move to item 4.4, involuntary commitment transport services. And I think Mike will talk with us about that as well.
I will do a short presentation. And again, the sheriff and Chief Bailey are online as well. What this is, is a resolution for providing involuntary commitment transportation services. As we work with Cardinal Innovations in our local area crisis, local area crisis plan, we're bound by statutes to provide that transportation for involuntary commitments, whether it's through our services or through a contracted service. So in order to get the local area crisis plan approved, we must request that the board pass the resolution to support this. And I can read this resolution. It's a little lengthy, but I will read it to you. Resolution of the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners, adopting a plan supporting private provider involuntary commitment transport services. Whereas pursuant to North Carolina statutes 122C-251A, cities and counties have the duty to revise to its law enforcement officers' transportation under the involuntary commitment proceedings of Article 5 of Chapter 122C of the North Carolina General Statutes. Whereas the North Carolina General Statutes 122C-251G provides that the governing body of a city or a county may adopt a plan for the transportation of respondents in involuntary commitment proceedings, and that private agency personnel may be designated to provide all or parts of the transportation required by said proceedings. And whereas, North Carolina General Statutes 122C-251G further provides that persons designated in the plan to provide transportation shall be trained, and the plan shall assure adequate safety and protection for both the public and the respondent. And whereas the Cabarrus County Sheriff's Office, local law enforcement officers and other affected agencies participate jointly in the execution of a plan for transportation of respondents in involuntary commitment proceedings. And whereas pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 122C-251G, law enforcement and other affected agencies receive adequate training through Cardinal Innovations Healthcare and in the transportation and restraint of mental health patients, and are capable of providing transportation in a manner that ensures safety and protection of both the public and the respondents. And whereas Carolina's healthcare operates hospitals, including emergency departments within Cabarrus County and surrounding counties. Whereas Carolina's healthcare services receives mental health patients who are respondents in commitment proceedings pursuant to Article 5 of Chapter 122 of the North Carolina General Statutes, who require transportation services from time to time. And whereas, Carolina's healthcare has signed a contract with a private agency to provide all parts of the involuntary commitment transportation services between Carolina healthcare's facilities. facilities. And whereas the agreement between Carolina healthcare and the private provider contracted to provide transportation of involuntary commitment respondents shall be consistent with the requirements of North Carolina General Statutes 122(c). And further, the provider will receive crisis intervention training, will supply vehicles for the transportation of respondents, and will provide automobile liability insurance in the amount of not less than $2 million for a combined single limit bodily injury and property damage recovery, all owned, non-owned and hired automobiles. Commercial general liability coverage in the amount of not less than $1 million per occurrence, $2 million in the aggregate per annum, and excess umbrella coverage in the amount of $2 million per occurrence, $2 million in the aggregate, and any other applicable coverage required. That providers will comply with the applicable laws in the transportation of residents, and that providers agree to indemnify and hold harmless Cabarrus County and the sheriff's office and his employees or agents, and shall be provided with no cost to Cabarrus County or the sheriff's office. Now therefore be resolved that as permitted by North Carolina General Statutes, Chapter 122(c)-251g, the plan for transportation of involuntary commitment respondents is hereby adopted by the Carolina's healthcare to engage the services provided between Carolina's healthcare facilities of respondents involuntary, and comply with the requirements of the procedures in Articles of 5 of Chapter 122(c). Neither the adoption of the plan nor the designation of a private provider or shall be construed as creating any agency or other relationship between the county, the sheriff's office, and the provider. This resolution is intended to serve as a designation required by North Carolina General Statute 122(c)-251g adopted this 17th day of August, 2020. And the sheriff and the chief are there to elaborate on how that operation actually takes place, if you have any questions for them.
Questions for Chief Bailey or the sheriff? And now that I was involved in a conversation with our sheriff's office earlier in the week regarding mental health services and situations in the county, and I was amazed at the number of trips that our officers make on these involuntary commitments. Chief Bailey, and many of them to, some to Wilmington, others to Winston-Salem, Raleigh. Chief Bailey, you cited a number the other day, what was that number?
Yeah, we're between 500 and 600. We've been as high as 640 in some years. And one of, part of that conversation was, not only are we responsible for taking that involuntary commitment to another facility for further care, but if the person's not, doesn't have a ride to get home, we also are mandated by statute to return that person back to the county. So oftentimes, we're taking them there, and in many cases, more often than not, we're bringing them back. So some of our primary facilities are in Winston-Salem, Raleigh, and just outside of Wilmington. So we do, on any given day, we're generally on the road somewhere in the state just transporting mental health commitments.
And so this agreement just provides for the opportunity to engage a third party, is that what I'm understanding?
That's correct. Well, our sheriff's department runs their, most of their trips themselves. The city of Concord and the city of Kannaples both have similar resolutions. And then I believe Atrium, Chief Atrium, they hire a private provider to run between their facilities, correct?
That is correct.
Yeah.
But what the municipalities provide is transportation to northeast medical center or to one of the urgent cares inside the county. We also provide that same service to all of our citizens outside of municipal limits. However, the county is responsible for transportation from that facility if they require further care to another facility in the state. The municipalities do not provide that. That is something the county is mandated by statute to provide. So we do tend to have a larger number of trips, mental health trips than the municipalities, because not only are we taking them to northeast, but we're also responsible for the transportation anywhere in the state that the bid can be found. So that could be as far away as Wilmington, Black Mountain, Raleigh, Winston-Salem. So, yeah, so we run a significant amount of trips each year.
Any additional questions, commissioners? Okay, thank you very much. We will move now to item 4.5. I think, as was mentioned in our earlier conversation, fiscal year 20, funding reappropriations, and we're delighted to have Rodney Harris back for that one.
Thank you. So each year at this time, usually in August, and then sometimes in September, we bring these reappropriation requests to the board for consideration. These are unspent funds as of June 30th from the prior fiscal year that could not be spent for a variety of reasons. For this year, these funds total just over $1 million. About half of that total is federal state funds, grants, and donations that are restricted to a specific purpose that we want to make sure we obviously use in the current fiscal year. The other half are primarily IT projects. And as you can imagine, the pandemic has had an incredible impact on all of us, and it has delayed a number of IT projects that are important for the county. And so that was, it makes up the remaining half of the $1 million. At your regular meeting, we are going to ask for you to amend the fiscal year 2020-2021 budget ordinance to allow the carryover of these funds. And I will amend the list to include carrying forward the $675,581.75 from unspent contingency funds in case the board decides to proceed with the Early Childhood Education Center. And I can take any questions that you have.
Questions for Rodney? I think we all have a pretty comprehensive list in our materials of what all those figures are. Any questions before we move on? Okay, thank you. We move now to item 4.6, sanitary sewer easement at Wellington Hills Elementary School. And Jonathan Marsh.
Good evening. There is a private development going in adjacent to the Wellington Hills Elementary School. In order to supply sanitary sewer to that, they would need to connect to a Concord sanitary sewer line that's on the Wellington Hills as well as Winkler Middle School property. In looking at that, they need a small easement from the county, but we also discovered that the main easement for that sewer line had never been dedicated to the city. That sewer line probably predates the purchase of Wellington Hills Elementary Site by the county, but hadn't been taken care of by the property owner when it was first done. But now that sewer line serves the new high school, so there is a necessity for us to make sure that it is properly dedicated. So the developer has had their own survey company survey that for us, and has offered to complete the necessary documents in order to get that dedicated in lieu of paying for that short connection. So we would recommend this to you, that you grant that connection to this sewer line.
Okay. Any questions for Jonathan? I think it's pretty self-explanatory. Thank you very much. We move now to item 4.7, request for additional $30,000 for sheriff training and firing range renovation project. And we have Kyle Billifer and Susan Garrington to talk about that.
Kyle, if you want to go first, and I'll talk about the funding.
Yes. In our, in the recent barrier wall excavation and rebuild that we've been doing at the sheriff's department firing range and training range, we discovered several subgrade stormwater systems that were installed, obviously, when the project, when the site was originally built, which was long before my time, long before we had blueprints of it. A lot of that is degraded, rusted out, eating away at the ground. So what I met with Susan to ask her to be able to come up with basically an owner's contingency fund for us to go ahead and repair some of these things. The way that project was bid, it was a mandatory contingency in there for contractor contingency, which I can tap, and we've already started to use some of it, but we did not have a separate fund for owner's contingency as we do in some of our larger projects. So I've asked Susan to try to find some of that amount to go in and fix some of these things that we found. And just FYI for the board, that site shares a parcel with the actual landfill, and that's part of a subgrade stormwater system that takes water from the range out behind the barrier walls and puts that into one of the borrow areas of the landfill. So making sure that that doesn't eat away at the structure underneath the barrier walls is pretty important just moving forward, especially with the amount of money we're spending on rebuilding the barrier walls right now.
Okay, any questions for Kyle? And now Susan can tell us how we can pay for it.
We have some funds, we, our Fund 343, which is called our construction and renovation fund, when within projects are completed, we move them to an available area. So this is project savings from several different projects through the years, and we are able to capture $30,000 of that money and move it over so it will be available for the firing range project. We currently had about $59,000 in that fund, so this will, you know, get it down to about $29,000 that we can keep for other cost overruns or just different needs from the little, the closeout of projects, and being able to use it for short runs, short falls on some other smaller projects. So it is available.
Thank you. Any questions for Susan or Kyle? Okay, thank you. We move now to item 4.8, Rowan Cabarrus Community College contingency request for the Advanced Technology Center. Excuse me. And Susan will kick us off on that, and I think we have some community college staff on hand as well.
Absolutely. And we've been working on the Advanced Technology Center for several years now, and there is a need, and we have a memo in your agenda packet for the contingency funds. As you keep in mind, usually contingency funds are kept over in our capital reserve fund in case there's a need for the money for short runs on projects and things like that. They do have a balance of $251,093.86 left in their contingency funds that are over capital reserve. And so they're coming tonight with some different reasons to point out that there is a need for this money to be transferred into their Advanced Technology Center project to complete out their Phase 2. So I will let them take it. I know I see Jonathan's on the line, so maybe he's going to speak first.
Yes, I will. Thank you, members of the commission, for having us tonight. This is going to act as match for the $2 million EDA grant that the Federal Department of Commerce's Economic Development Administration awarded to the college to support the project. So we are asking for shifting this money so that we can use it. It falls within the original $17,017,484 budget for the project, and we'd like to put it to use so that it can help us finish out those spaces and be used by the taxpayers.
Okay, thank you, Jonathan. Commissioners, do you have questions on this item for either Jonathan or Susan? Okay, very good. Thank you very much. And we move now to item 4.9, from finance, write-off ambulance, library miscellaneous receivables, and Susan will address that.
Okay. So we come to you once a year with ambulance write-off. We typically keep three years plus the current year of receivables. So this is an annual request. This year for the ambulance, we're going to write off the fiscal year 2016. It is $2,021,013.97, which is a lot of money, but also have, hopefully Jimmy's on the phone with Jimmy, it's on the list, on the phone for us to ask him any questions about the balances. However, you know, we do use a third-party billing company. We use debt set-off, different garnishments and things, and some things are just contractual, you have to write off. If it's a Medicaid trip, they're only going to give you a certain dollar amount. So those things are taken into consideration. So this year's request for the EMS is $2 million, and I'll see if there's any questions about that before I move on to the library.
Good with that. It's, it is a, it is a large amount, but we've had, we have this discussion every year.
We do, we do. Okay, the library receivable this year, we need to write off $46,996.43. So this is also, you know, we, the library will cut off people when they don't pay their fines, and that sounds like a lot of fines, but it's also for lost books, and that some families will check out, you know, if they have children, they may have 10, 12, 13 books at a time. And so if they're all overdue, or if they lose some, so it just amounts up to a lot of money that's owed by the library. But these are things that, this is three years back, then we've not been able to collect and would like to get those off of the financial records. You know, at any point in time, EMS or libraries, somebody wants to come in, they want to pay their bill, definitely take that. It's just clean up for the general ledger and for audit purposes. So that would take care of the library. Any questions on the library? The last amount is the submissions receivables. These are things like fire alarm permits, different things that we'll bill for, but a lot of the plate, and there's a sheet in your agenda packet. All these places are out of business, or we've reached out to them and it's $50, or the highest one is $1,800, and we've worked with rich, and it's not, it's just not feasible for us to continue working on these with this just small dollar amount. So this, these are less than three years. However, we have exhausted all the means, I don't think, and there again, if somebody comes in and wants to pay, we're going to definitely take their money, but it's just for financial statement purposes. It's just unless we want to dedicate more staff time to going out to visit the businesses or something like that, I just don't think we're going to be able to collect some of these funds, and some of the businesses are out of business. So the amount this year is $4,289.72 that we would like to just go ahead and get that off of our books and clean it up. Questions on those?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, and next is item 4.10, Cabarrus County Courthouse Expansion Construction Manager Risk Contract Extension. And we have Kyle Billifer back for that one.
Currently, Cabarrus County has a GMP, or Guaranteed Maximum Price, based contract with Messer Construction for the courthouse expansion, construction manager at risk services. On December 13, 2019, Messer Construction out the scope of work, site naming portion of the project. This was referred to as GMP, or Guaranteed Maximum Price Number One, and is considered an extension to their original contract, which was for pre-construction services. As mentioned in the May 2020 meeting, GMP 1.5 originated from the desire to lock down the bid packages for the rammed aggregate piers, the below-grade concrete, and the tower crane, and get all of those subcontractors in play prior to the bulk of GMP 2 going out for bid. Messer has now received the official GMP 1.5 bid, and that is attached in this agenda item. Lauren could bring that up. I'm asking the board for a motion to approve GMP 1.5 bid award and authorize the county manager to execute the contract extension between Cabarrus County and Messer Construction, subject to revision by the county attorney, and authorize the finance director to prepare the related budget amendment and project limits. The amount of GMP 1.5 is $3,397,982. And I will preface by any other questions by saying, this means that G... We're, we're fine, we're fine on schedule, sir.
Yeah, okay, good. Well, the bulk is this is money we were going to spend anyway. It's part of the, the scope of work for the, the CMAT. We're just handling it administratively a little different way, and I'm totally fine with doing it that way.
Sir, when this idea came up, I, I immediately met with Susan and we discussed it. And we do have the, the money available, and it is shrinking what GMP 2 is. Most, most construction manager at risk don't like us having all these numbers. We apply these different numbers to these GMPs to make it easier for us financially to speak. But for them, this is all one large project. But this is to lock those, those certain divisions or contractors, those trades, lock those prices in for all this early site work. And this was all discussed actually pre-COVID. But it's, we benefited, needless to say, based on the, the estimate, the cost about that.
And spoiler alert, that same conversation may be coming up later.
Yes, sir, it will be.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman, for Susan, since you're doing all the accounting there. This $3 million that Kyle is asking for us to release, is that part of the, the lobs that we did? And that we're going to start paying interest on that money? Or is it money that we have around that we can use it for that?
It is part of the lobs 2020. And this is the draw program, so we do only pay interest on the amount that we draw down. And we had, we had to approve up to $130 million for this, that we anticipate spending in the first 24 months. And with, we did include enough padding in that for situations like this, so we are fine. We will not draw over $130 million in the first 24 months. So we're constantly updating the cash flow by month, trying to figure out, you know, what we do have left and where we are. And so things are, things are looking good. So we do have, we were able to make that switch, so.
Well, that's what I was suspecting. I wasn't sure. I just wanted clarification because a lot of times, you know, when a need comes up, we'll, you know, go ahead and approve the money being used. And then as soon as we get the, the grant, the lobs money or whatever, then we just reimburse ourselves back. So I wasn't sure, you understand?
Yes, yes.
But you clarified it.
Yeah, this is good because we didn't borrow that 130 million upfront and we're not paying interest on the, you know, for month after month. We are just paying what we have drawn down so far. So, so it's, it's good. Like today, we made the first, for the August payment for July, it was like $2,000 in interest. So for what we've drawn so far. So it's always look, it's looking good.
I appreciate all your effort. Thank you very much, Susan.
You're welcome.
Okay, any additional questions or comments on this item? Okay, well, we will stay with Mr. Billifer to move to item 4.11. Cabarrus County Emergency Medical Services Headquarters Construction Management at Risk Selection.
Cabarrus County posted a request for qualifications or an RFQ for a construction manager at risk services on June 22 of 2020 for the construction of the new Cabarrus County Emergency Medical Services Headquarters. Nine firms submitted qualification packages with a due date of July 10 of 2020. An internal selection committee consisting of Cabarrus County staff, Cabarrus County EMS and Cabarrus County Commissioners made a shortlist of four of the nine firms. And I know that the agenda item says three, but it was later switched to four based on the different grades that came in for the submissions. ADW Architects, who's the architect for the project, offered written evaluations on all of the RFQ submissions, and they were involved in the process, including the interview process, but they did not have an official vote in the process. The four shortlisted construction firms made presentations to the selection committee and our representative from ADW Architects on July 30 of 2020. The presentations were 45 minutes long with an additional, 30 additional minutes for Q and A. And that was all done virtually. I'm asking the board in the regular meeting to approve the bid award and authorize the county manager to execute a contract between Cabarrus County and Vinoye and McFarlane, and subject to revision by the county attorney. I do have Jimmy Lentz is on the call, as is Todd Shanley and Commissioner Kiger, all of individuals that were on the selection committee. And we can answer any questions about the process for Vinoye and McFarlane.
Any questions for any of the group commissioners? Thank, thank you all for your work on this. And especially thank you, Commissioner Kiger, for representing this board and the time that you invested in that. Any other questions or comments?
I'd just like to make a comment. It certainly was my pleasure to do so. But the, the most comforting thing to me that I'd like to share with the board, the county manager, and really the public in general is the quality of the contractors that we had that showed up and want to do work for Cabarrus County was outstanding. These were top-flight, top-notch firms. And I think that speaks very well of Kyle and the way he runs the, his, his group and his, the way he goes about doing his business. And my hat's off to him. I know that sometimes it's the toughest phone calls, calling the people that didn't get to work because you want them to come back next time. Well, we get that, and we get good firms that want to do work here. So I would just like to say, well, I'm thrilled with the firm that got picked. But we've also got other firms that, that, that want to be here, want to do business with the Cabarrus County. And that's good for all of us in the long run.
Very good. Thank you, sir. All right, if there are no other questions or comments, we will move to item 4.12. Mr. Billifer again, Human Services Center Lease Renewal.
The owner of the Human Services Center building, Canopus Land Incorporated, has reached out to Cabarrus County Area Manager of Operations to discuss the building lease renewal. And I had come up to you guys before and spoken about this a couple of months ago, just to kind of give you a heads up that it was coming. The current renewal expires on May 31 of 2022. The owner would like to extend the lease term to May 31, 2027, so five-year lease renewal, accompanied with a CPI adjustment in 2022. There has not been a Consumer Price Index adjustment since 2012, and I did go back and verify that. The owner has discussed with the county, large ticket improvement slash repair items such as the patio surface and the parking lot. The owner is not offering a repair replacement of the parking lot, the actual asphalt on the parking lot with this lease extension, as has been discussed in the past. That's been one of the discussions that we have had several times. There's been some minor improvements, striping and sealing and that type of maintenance. But what the county had requested in the past is, is what I would call a complete gut of that parking lot and adding a, a pretty substantial subgrade stormwater system. And that's not something they're going to offer with a five-year renewal. They would want something more guaranteed, like a 10-year and possibly even more. And there was some definite discussion of some considerable CPI increases involved in that, not just one. So I, I was not comfortable with that and told them that we would take the five-year and the lights and the patio. What they're suggesting, and obviously we do not have a draft of this. I told them I would have to take it to the board before we did it. And of course, county manager Downs and, and our attorney would have to review it. But we're currently paying about $6.90 per square foot. And basically what you're kind of looking at, if you equate out the CPIs that we haven't, haven't gone up since 2012, is you'd be looking at jumping to about $7.75 per square foot. So what that equals is about an $800,000 a year increase. I'm sorry, $800,000 total, so not a $100,000 increase.
So that's $800,000 for the five-year term.
Annually, annually.
Annually, an additional $800,000 annually.
No, no, I'm sorry, 800,000, I, I think I, that's why I said an additional $100,000 annually we would be paying for, for that, for that building.
Okay, so that would be 500, a half million dollars over the five years.
Yes, correct, correct, correct. And I did go out and verify their Consumer Price Index. And one, they're exactly correct, they have not gone up since 2012, they have not adjusted. And that's about dead nuts in line with what it is.
So is it standard practice to negotiate a lease of this nature two years in advance of the expiration?
Well, it's funny that you mention that. They reached out to me prior to COVID. And then they started reaching out to me more frequently once COVID came. And I know that there are a lot of, you know, large retailer box building owners that are hesitant and a little worried that they're not going to have tenants. So I suspected that that had some driver in it. But in the past, I, I believe probably Mr. Downs could speak more to it. I would say about a year ahead of when we would expire is when we would start to discuss renewal. At least in my past two extensions with that building, it was about a year in advance of the expiring.
Yeah, I think I, I agree with Kyle. They, they've come in a couple of times and, and each time they, they, they would like to do it a little early. So they have a, you know, so they have, they know that they're going to have at least for an additional five or seven years. But then they're also offering some capital improvements as an incentive to do that. And over the years, they've offered some other options. But now they're looking to replace, Kyle was at the light, the lights in the parking lots and.
That, that's correct, sir.
Yeah. So, you know, typically if, if we say no, we're not going to do it early, we're going to wait and do it five years, then we're going to argue with them because they're not going to want to replace the lots. They're just going to, we're going to have to call them every time the lights go out or, or something, some issues with the lights. And so that's, that's the benefit. We know that we're going to have it for that much longer. We're going to get a little bit of some capital improvements along with it. And, and, and they, and on their side, they get to know that it's going to be leased for an additional five years. And of course, they're spreading the cost of that capital improvement out over that five years, so.
Additionally, we pay the utility bills on those lights. So it's obviously, I want them to switch them out to LED parking lot lights because it does save us on operating expense.
Yeah, they asked, they asked for an extended, a longer period, and Kyle and I were both uncomfortable about going too much longer because we just don't know what the future of us using that building. Are we looking to build a new, a new, a new Human Services Center? So we did want to commit to 10 years. So we worked on five or seven, and then we ended up with five.
Well, just my little bit of input. Now, I recall, Kyle, when you brought this to us, I can't remember when it was, but I remember the conversation that we had. And I'm hoping, you know, that, you know, that we're going to continue to be looking forward for our own building for Human Services at some point. I don't know how far out in the future that would be. And at the present time, I don't see us having really much option other than plan on renewing that at some point, you know, for the additional five years, which would give the county plenty of time, you know, to decide one way or the other and put it on the county CIP, you know, just like we would anything else that we do. But right now, though, I think we're sort of, you know, in a spot to, to probably go ahead and renew it. But I don't mean we got to do it right now. We may wait a little while longer. But it's like Mike said, all we're going to do is just go round and round with them. And in the meantime, they may find another tenant that, that would give them a 10- or 15-year lease. That's the chance you take sometimes. But I'm hoping that we'll be able to have our own building at some point. And we'll just have to just wait and see.
Well, I, I think myself and county manager Downs were thinking five years. You know, if you look at trying to build a building that sheer size and, and I don't know what our DHS system will be at that point if we're, you know, doing multiple locations or one large location. But that, the square footage of that building is just over 100,000 square feet. So if you were, if you, if the board challenged me with building them a new building, I would obviously want to build it bigger with, with growth. So let's call that 130,000, 140,000 square foot building. With the parking, to be able to handle the employees and the citizens that come in, the construction time of something like that, plus finding the property to put it on, we're getting close to that five-year mark right there. So that, that's.
Yeah, and that's what I was thinking, you know, very, very much on the same path. And obviously, we sort of learned this from building schools, that it's a lot cheaper to go up than it is to go out. You know, we've learned that. So obviously, a building of that size, that many square feet, we would probably want to go up with the building somewhere, which obviously would require a smaller footprint and acreage as well.
Yeah, and we, we've had conversations with, with, with Karen Calhoun about what, what is the, what is she envisioning as the future? How are we going to be, continue to deliver these services? And are we in, we have been looking at spreading out and co-locating some services with other buildings. And we would probably look to do this as well, some of these multi-purpose or flex office spaces throughout the county that anybody can use, whether it's a social worker or a fire inspector or building inspector or somebody like that. So, so that's, that's what we're looking, and we'll be asking you for some direction on that over the next year. By doing this early, we, we know we'll have seven years with the two years of the current lease and then five more to plan and design. But we want to make sure that we're getting your input on, do you want to look at the one large building or, or one medium-sized building and look at satellite or, or district offices out there, so.
Any additional questions on this item? Certainly the explanation that you've given, I feel comfortable going ahead with this. The fact that we do, will experience some advantages by committing earlier. And as Mr. Billifer pointed out, if we decided today that we wanted to build a facility of our own, we still would need some additional time. So I, I feel comfortable with it. And I see some head nodding yes around the room as well. So hopefully that gives you what you need to proceed forward on that.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we move now to item 4.13 from IDS Storage and Network Refresh Lease Agreement. We're happy to have Todd Shanley to talk about that.
Thank you, Chairman Morris. All of you have been on the board for more than 36 months, so you, this may seem familiar to you. So here at Cabarrus County, we refresh our storage, which is the spinning discs or the flash arrays that Jason would remind me that they don't spin like I used to maintain as he does now. The, all of the discs that support the county's infrastructure. So we have two data centers, so we spread that, that data across two data centers and replicate. And we also support Canopus City Schools and Cabarrus County Schools on this storage area network. And in order to maintain, you know, refresh data or, you know, things that keep us up, up to date, we lease that storage. So we turn that in every three years and maximize the, the use of those dollars. So what we're currently getting ready to turn in is 310 terabytes of storage. What we're going to, the release that we will be adding is one, a unit at each location is 200 and, 200-plus terabytes, which will actually almost give us 400 terabytes each location. And then an additional unit that'll give us 892 terabytes of storage. So it's quadrupling the amount of storage that we currently lease, and the need is there. So the fact that we do a, a significant amount of video surveillance and other projects that we have coming down the pipe, this will bridge the gap until we start putting more things in the cloud. Obviously, we're running meetings like this and a lot of the other things we're doing from cloud platforms. But there's still a significant need to have data and storage here on-site. So having said that, this is a budgeted project, so there is no budget need or request. I guess I need to author, ask, need to authorize the county manager to execute this contract after it's gone through the thorough review by the county attorney and the finance team. And I'll open it up for any questions.
Okay, questions for Todd? I'm, I'm quite frankly scared to ask any questions for fear of further displaying my ignorance of some of the terms that he used.
Sorry about that. It's been one of those nights. This has been a, it's been a very interesting meeting here on the back end. We've, we've had some, we've had some very good meetings, as you guys mentioned. But this will be one for the books that we've, we're, we've had a good time here trying to keep everything up and going.
Well, you've done a good job. It hasn't shown to us at all. Okay, any questions for Todd before we move on? Thank you. Okay, we move now to item 4.14, Library Circulation Policy Changes. And we are happy to have Emory Ortiz with us to talk about it.
Hello, I'm glad we've made it this far. I'm going to try not to drag this out too much so we can move right along. Lauren, is it easier for me to share my screen with the presentations? Whatever you want to do. Okay, let me try that. First, for the circulation policy, there are a few changes that we've made. Let's see. I've only done this one other time before. Let me see if I can. Do, 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 here we go. Perfect, thank you. Okay, can everyone see that? Great. Okay, so at our recent Board of Library Trustees meeting, we did discuss some changes to our circulation policy that would enable more access specifically for educators and students in Cabarrus County. So right now, typically speaking, unless you're a Kannapolis City School student and can access our digital items with your student ID, you do have to have a parent that registers for a card and is your responsible, you know, guardian. And, and it, teachers, if they don't live in Cabarrus County, have to pay a non-resident fee. Anyone who lives outside the county has to pay a non-resident fee. But over the years, as we formed more and more partnerships with different schools, we have had requests for more access, easier access. So what we have done is changed this wording under the non-resident who is eligible for free registration and said that employees of Cabarrus County and students and educators at educational institutions, institutions within Cabarrus County are eligible for a free library card. So this would mean if you're a teacher at Cannon School and you live in Mecklenburg County, but you're, you know, here in Cabarrus County teaching our kids every day, you could also get a free card. Same thing if you're a student, you know, at Cannon and you live in Mecklenburg. You're welcome to come and get a free library card at any of our library branches. We're, we're hoping that this will just make things a little bit easier, a little bit more equitable, especially with, you know, the charter schools and the various college institutions that we have as well. We have resources for all of these students and educators. So we want to make sure that they are able to take advantage of that. The second thing to discuss with you this evening is changing our annual fee for non-residents. So back in 1986, we formed a reciprocal agreement with Rowan County that Rowan County can get free library cards for Cabarrus County and vice versa. But anyone else who lived outside the county had to pay a $10 fee at that time. When I started in 2014, that had been increased to a $15 non-resident fee. And it's just significantly lower than all other surrounding counties and has just not been changed in a very long time. So to kind of make it a little more fair to our taxpayers, the Board of Trustees approved a $25 annual fee for non-residents. So it increases $10 this year. And just so you kind of know how small of an impact that is, we only have about 300 non-residents right now. So that's not a massive influx of cash or anything, but it would help it make it a little bit more equitable. Okay, any questions about that?
Okay, it appears that there are none. So we will go to the next item, which is also from Emory on overdue fee fines.
Perfect. This is the fun one. Okay. So an emerging trend in library services is going fine free, and that's what I'd love to discuss with you. Why have libraries traditionally charged overdue fines? That has been as a measure of accountability. So of course, you know, I know you've heard me say before, I bring things back late as well, unfortunately. But it's supposed to encourage people to bring items back on time. So you have a seamless flow of materials and information. It's also a slight source of revenue. A lot of library systems, especially smaller and more rural ones, do kind of count on that for some of their funding. However, with our budget, it turns out to be about one to one and a half percent of the library's budget over the last four years. For example, it was about $45,000 in this last fiscal year. Right now that's affecting a fairly significant portion, I believe, of our youth cardholders. 18% of cardholders 17 and under cannot use their library card right now. And 16% of adults cannot use their library card right now because they owe $5 or more on their accounts. And that has been the cutoff point that we've used. More information about the local impact that this is having. So we discovered that it's really hitting the Kannapolis and Mount Pleasant libraries the hardest. This, you know, the, the blocked cards and the overdue fines. And these are also two branches that we have seen either sharp declines in circulation or just kind of stagnant activity when it comes to, you know, registering new users or seeing things move off the shelves. And that, you know, a lot of that has been attributed to the negative impact that overdue fines have. So a lot of library systems adopted a fine free policy years ago. So now we have several years of data to show that say, actually, it really discourages the return of materials. You know, once it's been so many days or you've already racked up so much money in overdue fines, there's really that sense of shame. And so we found a lot of people just instead of trying to bother with that or pay whatever amount that they may owe, they just don't bring back materials and they stop using the library. It also, you know, even if it's been 20 cents, it can cause some really frustrated and angry customer service interactions as I'm sure all of my staff could tell you some really fun stories. And of course, we navigate those the best we can, but there have been a lot of, you know, altercations that started with overdue fines, unfortunately. And as Susan just did earlier, we're kind of writing off a lot of these anyway. I, you know, provided that chart on the side that kind of shows you the accumulating amounts that we've had throughout the past few years. And while that does include, those numbers also include lost books and, you know, other nominal charges that we have, a good portion of those tend to be overdue fines. So what overdue fines also do is they disproportionately affect users that either have a lower income, have transportation issues, you know, maybe a single parent home and they just don't have the time to get to the library as much as they'd like to, people with disabilities, all of these kinds of things. These people are affected at a higher rate by overdue fines. You know, right now in the time of coronavirus, we're also looking at people who need to apply for jobs, who need education assistance since everything is digital. And if their card is over $5 in balance, they would not be able to use the library right now. Now, obviously our facilities aren't open to the public at the moment. But if they were, there would be very little that most people could do. And, you know, we've trained staff to kind of work with people as best we can. We have formulated a procedure for doing payment plans. But again, going back, a lot of the times, these people just don't return to the library and are missing out on a huge service. So now again, that we've got data from libraries who have been doing this for a while. The libraries that have gone fine free have seen increased circulation. They've seen increased library usage. So, you know, perpetuating those good feelings and that feeling of it being an actual service instead of a punitive thing, more people will come and sign up for library cards. And, you know, the biggest question that the library trustees had is, do the materials actually come back? And it actually, in several library systems, they came back at a higher rate and faster than they did when there were overdue fines. You know, bringing it back one day late didn't cost them anything. They didn't have to stress out about it. So they would bring it back one day late instead of a week late. You know, it seems counterintuitive, but the, the data has been really fascinating to comb through. So in addition to the positives of going fine free, this is also the, the big new emerging trend, like I mentioned. This is a map in the United States of library systems that are going fine free. And I had started putting every library system in North Carolina that were going fine free, but they, they kept adopting it too fast, especially this year. So many libraries started on July 1st for their new fiscal year. So I kind of ran out of room to add more libraries, which is great. But I would love for us to join this. I really think, you know, especially in those communities like Kannapolis and Mount Pleasant, we, we want more people to use the library. We, we've seen a big drop in usage at the Kannapolis branch, and that used to be our second busiest branch. So, you know, doing things like this where it's a really nominal cost, but we gain the goodwill of the public and we gain more usage out of the things that, you know, tax money is already paying for anyway, I think would be a great advantage. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Emory?
Just curious, Emory, just curious, you know, we're talking about fine free. With the amount of being $5 and over, they don't have access and obviously they're delinquent. But have you considered though raising that minimum of $5 to maybe eight or 10? What kind of an effect would that have? I mean, the way I'm looking at it, you know, with it being a $10 limit, you know, which is double what it is now, would maybe be enough to bring some of those people back to bring the things back in and still obviously use the, the, the library. But if you go, if you go fine free, then the past is the past and we're starting all over again. And so they say, wow, we do this all over again. But I, I just, just a thought.
Sure. No, that's a good point to make because it was higher when I started. And we saw that we weren't actually getting any of that money. And you kind of saw those, those bills amounts that were drastically higher in previous years. That's because you could carry a higher balance on your account. It doesn't necessarily mean that people paid it anymore. It just meant that they could keep using the library longer, but also rack up a really high amount, which is why we wanted to change it to $5 in the first place because that seemed like something that was fairly attainable for most families to work through. But, you know, as the data is showing, it's, it's not really the incentive that it's meant to be. Now, I will say for the new process, what it would be, and this was also included in the circulation policy changes, but it wouldn't have made sense until I made this pitch. The new process would be that if a person is overdue on a book for two weeks, then their account will get blocked until they return the book. And then if they don't return the item, then they have to pay for it after 60 days. So there are still accountability measures here. You know, obviously our first goal is always to try to get the material back because that's the biggest portion of our budget is, is buying all the materials for everyone. We want those materials to come back. But if you don't bring it back, that's kind of it. You don't get to use the library anymore. If you just bring it back a few days late, there would be no penalty.
Okay, you just brought me from total skeptic to I'm, I think I'm okay now. Because you completely eliminated all incentive to bring the material back. If it doesn't cost them anything, well, okay, we're gonna, we're, we're gonna eliminate the nickel and dime, but we're all going to set something in place that if you're not participating in the free exchange of the, the material, you know, the person has borrowed and then now still has to return, then that, that's, that's a whole different scenario than just saying, hey, we're fine free. So I think calling it that, eh, that's fine. It's a little misleading, but I'm glad at least that there's something there. I mean, you, you just can't let the stuff walk off and never come back.
Yeah, it's not accountability free. It's just fine free.
So if there's an overdue book, can you still check out more books?
Actually, after 14 days, no. That was, that's when your account would be blocked.
But you could continue to check out more books for 14 more days, even if you have an overdue book?
Technically, yes. That's the way that we have it worded right now.
How do you, do you just order more volumes of the same book so that other people still have them or the other, why people are keeping it at home?
We do have a ratio of holds. So if a certain item has, you know, I want to say it's six holds on it, we'll order another copy to start filling holds. So that's usually how we balance that out. But yes, I mean, and right now too, if books are overdue, people can still place holds. They can still check out items. It doesn't necessarily stop the transactions until either right now they hit that $5 mark in overdue fines or, you know, in the new scenario, they would hit two weeks overdue.
Okay, additional questions for Emory? As I mentioned earlier, I serve as an ex officio member of that Library Board of Trustees. And when we had this discussion a few weeks ago, I had just heard a radio program where they were talking about libraries going fine free in other cities across the nation. And I listened very carefully to that and thought, gosh, I hadn't ever thought about those things. That, that kind of makes sense to me. And then when Emory presented this program and, and talked about those statistics, that so many of those, and particularly students that, that are, if, if they don't have transportation to get the books back on time, and then they just are embarrassed to come in after, there, there are so many factors that make sense to me. So I'm fully support this proposal. I, I think, you know, if, if we do that and we see people use the library more, then we'll all be happy. If we see that it's not working well, then we can always go back and revisit it again. And then, and maybe that's what we need to do. I mean, if, if things change frequently, but I'm very much in favor of, of going ahead with this and seeing what kind of results that we get. And so thank you for your recommendation. Any other questions or comments for Emory? We've only been on this meeting for three hours and 48 minutes. So feel free to, don't, we won't get in a hurry at this point. So I see some interesting faces out there. Thank you very much, Emory. Okay, we move now to item 4.16 from the Sheriff's Office. As we had some mention in our earlier discussion, integrated in-car video. And we have Sheriff Shaw, Chief Bailey and Deputy Manager Rodney Harris all down for this item. Who's going to kick it off?
Well, the Sheriff's offline, Rodney, do you want to go over the financial part first? You want me to talk about the system itself?
Go ahead and talk about the system first.
Okay, so when we originally brought the body camera program to the, to the board, we were pre-COVID and we were in discussions with Axon at the time. And of course with Ely and county management as far as obtaining the grant. That application again has been submitted. We're optimistic that we're going to get the grant. In speaking with Axon about this program, we started looking at several capabilities that the program had, one of which was an integrated in-car camera system. So the best way to explain it is this, when an officer currently initiates his blue lights, the in-car camera that we currently use, it comes on to start recording the event. However, there's this, there's a separate microphone that is attached to the officer's belt, which he must manually turn on as he approaches the car. The camera is recording everything from inside the car, but obviously there's nothing on, on the officer's body. So when we are discussing body cameras. So when we are discussing body cameras, the integrated in-car system that Axon provides in conjunction with the body camera. So when the officer turns the blue lights on in the car, the emergency equipment, it's automatically not only going to turn on the in-car camera, but it's also going to turn on the body camera. So it adds that feature, which we currently don't have. So for example, if an officer's involved in a pursuit, when that pursuit comes to an ending, the officer's going to jump out typically, you know, it's pretty exciting. It's a lot of adrenaline running. We may not always capture the audio because, again, the officer's having to manually turn on his microphone. So what we're asking the board to do is consider integrated car system in conjunction with the body camera program. And it's going to give us the advantage of having that body camera immediately turn on when the officer's blue lights come on. And it also is going to give us the ability to work through one platform to obtain that video evidence as opposed to working in two different platforms. If we just went solely with the body camera program and we did not convert over our in-car systems, when we're sending information over to the District Attorney's Office, when we're trying to gather all the video and audio in one piece, we'd have to actually piecemeal that together as opposed to having one system that's recording all of it simultaneously. The other interesting part of it is this. If the officer's outside the car and not engaged directly with turning on his emergency equipment, when he presses his body camera, it will automatically turn on the in-car camera system, which just is going to give you a more holistic view of the situation as opposed to being right on top of the scene when the officer's just wearing it on his body. So we're asking the commissioners to add some additional funding to this program in order for us to integrate the in-car system along with the body camera program.
So it's important to look at this in terms of what it contains because it's three separate parts. So you have the tasers, you have the body worn camera, and then you have this component, which is the in-car video. And if you look at that package as a whole, the total cost on an annual basis is roughly $2 million. And so the board, in the adopted budget for FY21, approved the body worn and taser component of this, which is roughly $1.1 million. So this is an additional $942,000 that would go towards this in-car video integration. That would break down to about $235,000 annually. The vendor, Axon, has agreed to defer the first-year payment and spread it across four years rather than five. And so the first payment would not be due until July of 2021. And so we could build this into the fiscal year '22 budget. But we would be able to benefit from the system much earlier, probably, I'm guessing in October, along with the body worn camera system.
Yep. And again, the benefits of the in-car is when you're looking at what's called the backend client, you're looking at actually having the incident recorded. If you don't go with the in-car system, the evidence would still be there. However, you're going to be working in two platforms. If it's, if we go with the in-car integrated system, when we're looking at it from the backend client server, we're looking at it as one nugget of information as opposed to having two nuggets of information that we're having to piecemeal together. It's also going to help facilitate us getting information over to the District Attorney's Office in a much more efficient way than currently that we would be using. Because in this case, with what we're currently using, we're having to burn CDs each and every time we have any kind of video evidence from the car. This would allow the District Attorney's Office to go in with their own license and manage that evidence without us ever having to use hard copies of DVDs, which of course takes officers' time to not only record it, but then to get it sent over to the District Attorney's Office. So I think it'll streamline our prosecution of cases. It'll streamline our obtaining of video evidence. And I think we're going to see a sharp decrease in the amount of videos that we have without audio. Because again, we'll get complaints in from the public every so often. And oftentimes, when I'm looking at the video, there's no audio because the officer, again, is having to manually turn on that mic as opposed to now, if we go with the integrated in-car system, when he turns on those blue lights, it's immediately starting to record the audio as well. So we think it's a benefit to the agency. We think it's a benefit to kind of meet our goal of transparency. And we're asking the board to consider that extra expenditure.
And just real quick, just to sort of maybe alleviate some heartburn about the amount. There were two places, as you'll recall, in the FY21 budget where we sort of hedged, not knowing how coronavirus was going to play out from a financial perspective. So one of those areas was we had $3.9 million that was budgeted to be used for one-time projects. So that is funding that in FY22 would be available for appropriation to meet ongoing needs. And then the other place we hedged is we were very conservative in our sales tax estimates. So we projected about a 20% decline in sales tax. Based on the numbers we're seeing, we've been in the 10% to 15% range. And so we are cautiously optimistic that we are going to be able to exceed our sales tax projections in the current year, which will then allow us to raise those projections for the following year. So we do have a little comfort from a financial perspective that if you decided to move forward with this, that it would be sustainable.
Okay, commissioners, questions for Chief Bailey or for Rodney? I think that this really offers some great advantages since they have explained the details of how it works. If I understand correctly, when a taser is used, that cuts on every officer's camera.
Yes, even when it's charged, without it being deployed, once he powers on the taser, it's automatically going to turn everything on that's an Axon product within about 30 yards of the officer. So yeah, once he powers it on, he doesn't even have to pull the trigger. It's going to turn on everyone's cameras, including the one in the car if we go with the integrated system.
Yeah, and I think that we all have seen various situations on television where some incident occurred and there's been some explanation. Well, if we had had the other camera angle, it would have shown it, you know, and so forth. There are just a lot of advantages to it. And I think one of the comments that stuck with me in a previous discussion we had about this was everybody behaves better when they know they're on camera. And that's every party involved. And this creates a lot of transparency. The public gets an opportunity to see exactly how our officers conduct business. They also get to see exactly how other folks that may be approached by officers react. So I see a lot of pluses in many different directions on taking this step.
Well, Mr. Chairman, we found in discussions with other agencies, and more often than not, it's actually exonerated the officer as opposed to showing that the officer did something inappropriate. So, you know, again, I mean, it's hard to project, you know, liability or complaints or what have you. But I really do believe that the system that we're looking at, and we've been in discussions with Todd and IT, I think if we get this system implemented and deployed, that we're going to see a lot of good benefits, not only for the citizens, for the county, for the agency as a whole. And again, we did a trial run. We had some beta tests done of body cameras. Several officers had them for a significant amount of time. Every one of those officers came back and endorsed the product. And, you know, you would think it'd be the other way around where you wouldn't want a camera necessarily videoing everything that you did. But in this case, all of the officers felt like that it was something that was necessary and they liked having it, so.
Excellent. Any additional questions or comments?
I would just say, I think the increased transparency is good for everybody. You know, Chief Bailey said, you know, it's a good thing.
Yep.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we move now to the approval of our regular meeting agenda. You all have a copy of that before you. To the best of my knowledge, I don't think we've taken any action tonight that would necessitate any changes. If so, I've missed them. But what is the pleasure of the board regarding our regular meeting agenda?
I'm in for approval.
And I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the regular meeting agenda as presented by Commissioner Honeycutt, seconded by Commissioner Shue. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. We do have need of a closed session tonight. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to go into closed session to discuss pending litigation and acquisition of real property authorized by North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A3 and 5.
I move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Poole and a second by Commissioner Kiger to go into closed session. Any discussion?
No, that was actually Commissioner Honeycutt.
I apologize, I was doing that by ear. Okay, I stand corrected. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. We are now in closed session. Thank you all in TV audience for joining us tonight.